Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to welcome you to the Board of Education meeting. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at the John. You can go to the corner of the room to get translation. Para acceder traducción pueden apretar el botón del globo o en Dejon pueden ir a la esquina de gimnasio. We are heading into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we're here to listen to any public comment there might be about our closed session items. The public gets two minutes per public comment per speaker. The closed session items that we'll be discussing are conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, conference with labor labor negotiators, and public employee discipline dismissal dismissal release complaint. Do we have any public comment in the room?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Linda Posnansky.
Thank you. And if you could just give us one second, we're going to put up the clock. And you can start. Thank you.
Yes, hi, I'm here about the notice of non reelection. I am a special ed teacher and I worked in the Oakland OUSD schools for about nine years. I moved to El Sabrani and I decided to come to the West Concha Costa School District. I worked in September at Lupine Elementary, where I felt like I was treated poorly and bullied. And I asked for a transfer and I transferred to Dover School, which is where I'm at currently. And I did discover that the principal at Lupine Hills put in for non reelection for me, which I consider very unfair since I was ill treated. And in front of you, I gave you a letter of recommendation from the principal of a school in Oakland, who gave me a very glowing recommendation and I would urge you to read it, but I will read a little bit until my time is over. She says, I have a great deal of respect for how Linda ran the classroom this year. As an administrator, I was not able to run it as smoothly as she does on a daily basis. As you make your final selection for candidates, I hope you consider Linda's organizational skills, ability to build strong relationships with students and families, and her dedication as an asset to your organization. There's a lot more, but I know my time is running up. I want to tell you that I really want to work here. I live here. I'm enjoying the school I'm at. I get along with everyone and they are, I already told them I might not come back and they're very sad to hear about that. So if you are going to re non to non reelect me, maybe you could wait for my second year, since this is my first year, if you have to. But you have so many vague.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Is there any more public comment?
Yes, our last public comment is Mark Mitchell.
Mr. Mitchell, there's a picture of a face with three lines on the mic. If you press that, you can start. There you go.
Okay, all right. Good afternoon, Dr. Hurst, President Gonzalez and Board members. I wanted to speak briefly to two items. First of all, the tentative agreement with United Teachers of Richmond. I want to make sure you know that the United Teachers of Richmond strongly support a decision tonight to ratify, adopt that agreement by this board. And if you discuss it in closed session, that is the strong wish of the 1,500 educators represented by our union. We worked very hard and we appreciate the presence of Dr. Hurst and President Gonzalez on our last day of negotiations. It really helped us come to an agreement that I think we can all be proud of. The last step is your approval of this agreement and helping us get us get it past the county so that we can move forward together to benefit students and families here in the district. Secondly, I wanted to speak in opposition to the 25 non re-elections that you'll be considering tonight. We have dozens and dozens of vacancies for certificated educators. And I'm concerned that there are 25 folks that are willing and currently working here that are being told they're not needed, they're not wanted. And I want you to to carefully review each of those situations. We just had a dedicated special education teacher tell you she wants to work here. She's enjoying her work. She would like another year to prove herself to the district. She's a first year probationary teacher. And so you don't have to do this tonight with her case in particular. I'm also wanting to express concern at the high number of teachers of color that are on the list of non reelects, particularly black educators. And I want you to really ask questions of your staff about why so many African American educators in particular are being proposed for non reelection. In fact, there are two black educators at one school alone that are being proposed for non reelection. We need those folks here in our district. And if they're willing to come and work here and stay here, I would encourage you to let.
Thank you so much. Is there anything, any more public comment? Thank you so much. Okay, everybody, we will now reconvene. Excuse me, we will reconvene for open session at 6:30 tonight. Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. I would like to welcome all of you to the board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below on the screen or at Dejon, you can go to the corner of the room to get translation. Para acceder traducción pueden apretar el botón del globo o en Dejon pueden ir a la esquina de gimnasio. I would like to welcome all of you again to the to the meeting of the Board Education, or excuse me, Board Education Meeting of the West Country Costa Unified School District. We're coming back from closed session. We are poised to be late tonight. After our opening procedures, the public will have an opportunity to make public comment. Public comment has recently changed. We have opportunities on non agenda items in person through Zoom and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last 30 minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you're attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding or time or substitution or speakers is permitted. The public will also have an opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after each staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move to our opening procedures. If everybody could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And for a line acknowledgement, we recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichen Yocuacma Carkin Aloni peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Dr. Hurst, can you please do roll call?
Absolutely. Thanks, sir. President Gonzalez.
Present.
Trusty Clerk Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Trusty Phillips. Absent. Trusty Reckler.
Good evening to everyone. I'm present.
Trusty Christian.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Trusty Baron.
Good evening, President.
Trusty Santos.
Good evening, President.
Thank you very much, sir. One member absent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Do we have a report from closed session?
Yes, sir, we do. In closed session, the board took action to approve OAH case number 2022120133 settlement. The roll call vote was as follows. Trusty Reckler, yes. Trusty Smith Folds, trusty clerk Smith Folds, yes. Trusty Christian, yes. President Gonzalez, yes. And then trustee Phillips was absent. Also, the board heard an employee appeal and decided to continue the matter to the next scheduled board meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Okay, everybody, now we're going to move to public comment. We had a lot of issues at the last meeting, so just a reminder, if you are here to speak on an item that we are discussing or hearing later in the agenda, please sign up to speak on it for later in the meeting. The people who are going to speak now are speaking on non agenda items, so items that we are not discussing tonight on their discussion or action items. So if you would like to make comment at this point on non agenda items, please fill out a form, give it to staff, and we'll call your name if time allows. We're going to switch between, we're going to go one person in the room, one person in Zoom, back and forth until our time has allotted. Staff, do we have public comment for non agenda items?
Yes, our first public comment is Lauren Ryan.
Thank you. And if you could please put the downtime, thank you. You may begin. Thank you.
Hi, I'm calling on all site staff, students and parents. Hello, everyone. My name is Lauren Ryan, educational specialist, currently serving students at El Cerrito High School and your district's appointed human rights chair through the United Teachers of Richmond. I also serve as one of the human rights coordinators for the entire Costa region. In my role as human rights coordinator, I've been tasked with collaborating with my other equity team members to put on a human rights event in May. We've chosen to collect testimonials from students and staff throughout the Alcoa region that highlight negative experiences related to human rights violations. We're collecting testimonials in hopes of publishing them and having a few select individuals come to our event to present. Once we publish the testimonials, we plan to share them with all district leadership and board trustees throughout the Alcoa region so that you can all be more aware of the human rights violations that continue to happen at your school sites. Our hope is that these testimonials will inspire and motivate you all to make some necessary changes in order to better support your students and staff. We would like to support our district leaders with improving conditions at sites to foster a more supportive, inclusive environment for everyone. Please email me, Lauren Ryan, if you'd like to submit a testimonial and share your story or if you'd like to refer someone else to me. The event in May is called Lift Every Voice as we hope to inspire people to speak their truth and share their story. If we want to attract or retain quality educators, we need to ensure that they're able to work in a safe, respectful environment. And we should also be ensuring this for all of our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, is there, are there any public comment on Zoom?
Our next public comment is Stella Miranda. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Public comment for me tonight is regarding the First Amendment violation on February 15, 2023. In 1971, in Cohen versus California, Justice John Marshall Harland II reasoned that particular four letter words being litigated here in perhaps more distasteful than, they're more distasteful than others would like. However, there is no censorship that should occur in this particular case. After the last board meeting, the board president stopped a a public speaker and stopped him because he used the phrase "mother effer." The federal courts ruling suggests that previously upon proposition that that board president, that board president violated the speaker's First Amendment right to free speech. After receiving complaints regarding a fellow board member and the board president also in the the word, it also posted in social media that we're going to be held accountable for public and community. Therefore, I request that the board president direct staff to to do an investigation on whether or not he violated the.
Our next public comment is Rodney Brown.
I'd like to say good evening, board. This is Rodney Alamo Brown, community advocate here in the city of Richmond, California. You know, politics is war without bloodshed and war is an extension of those politics. Just a couple of weeks ago, I was here along with some other colleagues of mine, sitting trying to explain some of the atrocities that's going on within the sector of our school district. One in particular, the Hams Middle School situation with the young ladies. And I was cut off because I was only granted two minutes to finish my speech. And of course, I left documentation with all of you. I'm hoping that an investigation that's being launched will be one that will be zis and one that will be important to the whole thesis of the situation. I know there was another young man who came here to speak last week who was taken off the microphone for whatever reason, maybe there was a cuss word that he described. But however, you have to understand when things are emotional dealing with children and he's a father, a black father at that, expressing his concerns about what's going on on the campus of El Cerrito High School concerning these children who are in leadership positions. Now, if we say the children are the future of the world and we have to start treating our children as though they are, we have to listen to concerned parents who want to talk about certain issues that's going on within the sector of this district. We just had another situation where a young man in Pinot Valley High School was hit by an adult father, beaten in the face twice. These are the atrocities that continue to go on in our schools. Now, I talked about the Hams situation where the young ladies up there has formulated a gang called the YNL. And I won't say what the N stand for and you guys know exactly what I'm talking about because it's a derogatory term, young blank names. This is the description of what they're saying about black children within the sector of our district. This is how to come to a complete halt very soon. If not, it's a powder keg for destruction, if not a race war that's going to transpire inside our schools. I'm hoping that each one of you on the board are listening very careful to what I'm saying. We have to come up with a formidable solution and a resolve. If not, we'll be doomed. God bless you all. Good night.
Our next public comment on Zoom is Aseido Wilson. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. This is Aseido Wilson, proud black educator. I just wanted to follow up on a comment that was made at a meeting regarding some situations at some of our sites in our district, where Dr. Hurst stated that he condemned violence and racial starts in the classroom. I wanted to clarify that they don't just take place in the classroom. They take this in our hallways, our cafeterias, our restrooms, our common areas, wherever you see kids on our campus. And that the district is speeding up equity work and anti racist policy district wide. How is that going to happen? We spent 2020 focused on race and equity and it turns out that that work was performative at best. How are we going to create an anti racist policy district wide? If this is a district, and I've heard this from students as well as a lot of my staff colleagues in this district, that we can't have anti racist policies unless we address the elephant in the room, which is anti blackness. We have worked on doing PDs regarding race and equity and it was very clear that a lot of the white staff in this district did not want to participate because for some reason they felt it was unnecessary, it was too consuming, and they had other things they needed to do. I figured if these folks can take their time to actually fight for a new contract, they should also be able to take time to fight for the students that they have in their classes and be allies to their staff members. So again, really consider how you're going to do this because right now, as the events have unfolded since 2020 into 2023, WWECC USD is Johnny going to see of anti blackness via sites from the central office to the school board and yes, to the teachers' union. It is everywhere. So once you address anti blackness, then I figured you'd be able to create some type of anti racist policy. Otherwise, as Brother Rodney Alamo Brown just said, we are on hedge for war and it'll be a powder keg waiting to explode. Good night.
Our next public comment is Mariela Gutierrez.
Hello, my name is Mariela Gutierrez. I'm a ninth grader at El Cerrito High and I want to talk about the security at our school. There have been like five or six gun related incidents just this year. I just got here, okay? And frankly, I've had enough. I think a lot of the other students have as well. Yesterday, we had a walkout at school and addressed this as one of the problems. And what happens? The next day, there's another lockdown. We shouldn't need to be in the pouring rain with a megaphone to be heard. We need better security at our schools and we need metal detectors. And I heard they used to have a police officer at campus at all times. And honestly, it shouldn't even be my job to give you guys ideas on how to keep me safe. I'm a child. I'm here to learn. It's your job. You guys are grown adults. It's your job to be protecting me and my classmates. In January, I came home frustrated and I came home so frustrated. I considered applying to another school because I know that at other schools in other districts, they would take my, me, my individuality as a student more seriously. They would take security more seriously. They would take the community more seriously. Please, listen to our voices. My mom sent you guys an email saying, please, this is insane. This is too much. Please, can what, tell me what you are doing? Because there's already been too many events that have happened at the school, right? What did, what did the superintendent say? Well, I'm sorry, this inconveniences you. This does not inconvenience us. This affects us. Do you understand? Please start taking action. Please start taking action so that we can feel safe in our schools.
Our next public comment is Justice Gilmore.
Oh, hello, I'm Justice Gilmore. I'm a senior at El Cerrito. I'm going to be reading for a friend of mine, Terrell Turner, but he can be here today. Do you want to learn about racism in El Cerrito High School? Did you know there are at least 10 different ethnicities at El Cerrito High School? At El Cerrito High School, some people get racially profiled every day. The reason I chose this topic is so people can see the racism that occurs every day at El Cerrito. I feel like the racism at El Cerrito is really serious and it needs to be addressed by the school board members and the school trustees because the racism at El Cerrito is getting worse and worse every day. There are some negatives that come with the racism that in the school of El Cerrito. One of the effects for me personally has been my anger that leads me to getting in trouble. Sometimes when teachers are being racist, I get angry. I try to get away from the argument, so I walk out to take a break and security or the principal will get mad and I get in trouble. Another negative effect on me is I had to change classes because of a racist teacher. The racist English teacher was picking on me. The English teacher called my mom and dad and asked if I could read and write. She was also kicking me out of class every day. She also gave me a book about black people and slavery to read. Very insensitive. The last negative effect on me is encountering security staff. I'm going to talk about one bad experience I had. Last school year, I was outside of my class, taking a break, and one of the security staff members walked up to me and said something racist. And I asked the staff member to please leave me alone very kindly. The staff member grabbed me and pushed me close to the wall and threatened me in front of Ms. Matlock and Ms. Ryan. I got really mad and I started cussing and threatening him back and I got in trouble, but he didn't. I'm going to give El Cerrito High School principals suggestions about the racism at this school. My first suggestion is to fire them if they have had hard proof. Teachers in El Cerrito should not be able.
Our next public comment is Imani Hightower.
Hi, I'm Imani Hightower, a current student at El Cerrito High School. Since, since I've started last year, there have been incidents that have occurred, but here are just a few. I've been in classes where the N word has been said. I question why only words that have been used negatively to towards African Americans are being taught in class. An altercation with another student happened because I was failed to be protected by the school after multiple emails were sent out and the admin knew about the situations prior to the altercation. It seems like y'all don't care about our black students, like when we have lockdowns, like when we don't have lockdowns, when it's only black on black crimes, when other ethnicities aren't endangered. I've been in classes where teachers have been blatantly rude to me and said that he feels unsafe because I wore a hat in his class. Am I wrong? Am I wrong because I feel uncomfortable when a teacher continues to say words to put down my people? Do I not deserve to be protected? Do I make you feel unsafe with this hat on my head right now? I didn't come up here for pity. I came up here to speak on situations that happened to me and ask for change. This isn't something that's happening on the news or made up. These situations are happening locally, just three miles away. I hope that you listen and at least try and help the students of color who face racism and mistreatment in our school district and community. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Maurice Hightower.
There we go. Sorry, can we restart his time, please? Thank you.
No worries. Hey, everyone, I'm Maurice Hightower. I'm the father of Imani Hightower and the uncle of Justice Gilmore, these two beautiful black students at El Cerrito High School that came here and spoke for everyone. Last time I did use the derogatory word. This time I took the time to write something else so I could not curse everyone out here. But here we go. If African American students with African ancestry had a flag, would you post on your social media page in solidarity? When is a cry for help continuously ignored, considered intentional disregard for human life, children's lives, their futures, your futures, our futures? I'm what many would consider an angry black man and I have every right to be. What would you do if your children were treated and mistreated while pursuing life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness in this beautiful country's educational system? Ignoring when evil is done is just as bad as doing the evil act. At El Cerrito High School, we're coming from San Francisco to where it's supposed to be more diverse city. But what makes Richmond any different? You know, I grew up in high, I went to Thurgood Marshall Academic High School, who learned about all the beautiful things that black people did, who promoted. And then you grow up and they tell you, hey, you know what? You have to be 10 times better than someone that stand on the side of you. Have to be 100 times better than someone that has a different skin tone than you. I've grown up into it. I've lived through it. I accepted it. But why should they have to accept the next generation? How could you sit here and look at children and say, hey, guess what? Do you have to go through the same pains that we had to go through? That our fathers had to go through, that our mothers had to go through and not feel sorry for yourself? When is enough enough? I understand, maybe you don't have complete control to nip in the bud immediately, but I'm pretty sure there's some things that you can do. I'm pretty sure you have children, maybe you can tell your children, hey, guess what? Use the golden rule. Treat the people who say, well, you like to be treated, if nothing else. If not that, then hey, guess what? There's more than slavery, cheating about all the stuff that African people have done for this world in general. Just give some.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is Mark Schalls.
At the last board meeting, President Gonzalez Hoi intimated that there are board protocols and norms that prohibit certain words or phrases. I thoroughly searched the board policies and found nothing of the sort. During public comment of the September 21st, 2022 board meeting with students present, Andrea Martinez said, I can barely effing pay the rent. What the F? And your pay is leaving us way in the effing ages. I cleaned up what she actually said. President Christian didn't stop her, no trustee, including you, President Gonzalez. So I called for a point of order to stop her comment at any of the obscenities. In contrast, the following occurred at the last board meeting. A public speaker said, you can't be completely ignorant to what's going on inside your school district and still decide you want to represent the mother trucker. Immediately, the board president interrupted, saying, I'm sorry, no. No, there's no cursing. Please turn off his mic. No, no more time. Whether you like it or not, board members are bound by law to have let him speak. The managed speech is protected under the First Amendment and the California Brown Act provides the public the right to address the board. None of the speaker's comments violated any of the published public comment rules, and you have previously allowed profanity to occur without interruption. The president and trustee Smith Folds hold a teaching credential. To hold a teaching credential in the state of California, one needs to demonstrate through coursework and testing knowledge and understanding of the U.S. Constitution. You are all trustees. Board trustees take an oath of office declaring they will support and defend the U.S. and California constitutions. Trustees also have special training in the Brown Act. Trustee Phillips is a member of the California Bar. Given the above, how could this board violate someone's constitutional rights? The public deserves better, and you all owe the public better. In the context of public comment, the speaker's rights were violated. It's only fitting that in the same context, an apology is given to the speaker and the public. Do not be surprised if you are sued for your violations. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Marie Bowles.
Good evening, board members. At the beginning of February, the Pinole Valley High School varsity football team was celebrated on our field for winning the state championship in their division. As was witnessed by many members of our community that were present that day, there were not that many people there. I heard people say it was because of the rain, but that's not the issue. The football program at Pinole Valley High School has suffered ever since they reopened our field with less than half the seating that was available prior to the renovation of our field. If we don't have seating, we don't have a following of spectators in our stands. Please restore the seating to, at the very minimum, the number of students that attend Pinole Valley High School. It is inconceivable that we would have anything less than one seat for every student at our school. Currently, we have less than half. This whole last school year, myself and many others had just stopped going to football games because seating was not available and almost every game was sold out. It made me sad to see so few people celebrating on our field with our football players on their big day. This is a very good example of not putting students first. I've seen the stadium seating for our school on the agenda, but I don't have any information as to how much seating, if any, will be restored to the school. I've addressed this board since last September, right after the school year started, and we still don't have seating. Could someone please inform the community as to when or if and how much seating will be restored to the school? Lastly, I would like to thank this board for giving the pay raise to teachers that they deserve. Not only would we have lost teachers, but we would have lost many students as well. I know many people who told me that if there had been a strike, they were done, and that they would send their children to private schools so that their education would not be disrupted. This made me very sad for our community because the very people who need this community to have their backs are the ones that can least afford to send their children to private schools. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Kim Chamberlain.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, IFTE Local Twenty-One SSA Chapter President. I have come to the board many times and to the community. I would like to also thank the board for approving at the last board meeting the custodial supervisor's job description changes. It has been a very long process to get that done, and it has nothing to do with anything other than working to make sure all the details with those custodial supervisors were very well sought out. So I appreciate everything. They appreciate it. It is, their details are much more vibrant, more towards what they are doing and all the changes COVID and just the new school sites have put into place. They would also like to thank everything in the new contracts that have been supporting them with the maintenance and operations agreements that have been made. It is with great pleasure, I say thank you very much for considering their hard work and going forward. Have a good evening.
Our next public comment is Ken Ryan. Mr. Ken Ryan?
Good evening again. My name is Ken Ryan. I'm the president of the Adult School Teachers Union. Last June, the vice president and myself were released from employment. And one thing that we forgot to ask the board was, what steps will be implemented to prevent this from happening in the future to adult school teachers? Thank you.
And our last public comment is Lon Harrison.
Good evening, board. Hope you guys are all doing well. So I'm here for the black kids, as you guys always know, I'm here for the black kids. I wanted to thank the district for really listening to us and doing some things that are really important to me. Y'all know I come up here all the time. So the district has offered us a way to support our BSU youth with giving them a youth summit to have their voice. So I hope everybody here that is listening to this supports our youth in coming to our youth summit if you are influencer and can make decisions for our black children in our district. I also would like to thank them for making it a priority that our children are reading. They had a literacy night last night, and that's just a spark of what we're gonna get ready to do so our black children are reading with the other children. And it's another thing I wanted to bring up. This is new. I would like for black children to be learning other languages too, and make it a point that black children learn other languages, like French, Swahili. Can we bring some other languages in that our children can be dual-language learners also? And have global learning also? Can we expose black children to other opportunities in our district? Because the data shows they're not getting all those opportunities to participate. And I want them to have opportunities to participate in global learning, excuse me, like other people do. I was trying to remember everything. So thank you. Okay, good night.
Thank you so much, board and community. That's it for public comment, but I did want to raise one issue before we move on. I did want to apologize to everybody for our last meeting. I was trying to stop poor language from being said, but I am learning as a new chair. This is my, one of my first few meetings, or it was last week, so last time. So I am learning and take ownership if I hurt people's feelings for their advocacy. So I appreciate the patience from the board and from the community as we continue to implement what we think is to be the best behavior. But I do own my piece, so thank you so much to everybody. Okay, board, we're gonna move forward. Sorry, something's happening to my Zoom. I'm being asked to host, which probably should not be me. Sorry about that. Thank you. Okay, we fixed. Okay, everybody, sorry, we're gonna continue on the meeting. So we have agenda review and adoption. Trustee Phillips?
Thank you. I would like to, is this the time to pull from the consent calendar?
No, that'll be during consent, adoption.
Okay, I missed it in the last few meetings, so if you could just pull my coat when it's time, I'd appreciate it.
Will do, absolutely. Okay, board, I don't see any more hands, so without objection, we'll approve the agenda. Thank you. Okay, so, so approved. Now we're gonna move to resolution number two-two-two-three-dash-five-four, Women's History Month. Ms., Dr. Hurst, is this your item?
President Gonzalez Hoi, I am available on Zoom if you'd like.
Sorry, thank you, Ms. Sanders. I didn't see you over here. I apologize.
No problem. Just one moment.
You can, you can go ahead and start.
Thank you. Just waiting for a document to load and I will go ahead and start. Thank you for your patience. Now, therefore, be it resolved that March is designated as Women's History Month to honor their contributions and that the West Contra Costa Unified School District honors the contributions that women have made throughout history and commit to support efforts to improve education and opportunities for girls and women.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sanders. Board, is there a motion?
I move resolution two-two-two-three-dash-fifty-four in recognition of Women's History Month, March twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you so much. Okay, board, are there any comments? Clerk Smith Folds?
I do have a comment. Superintendent Hurst, I would love for us to make sure that we're looking at issues that directly impact young ladies in our district and those who identify as female in our district, for example, period poverty. And for example, our dress code are just two examples that students constantly talk about, about that impact their learning environment and their, the way that they come to school and how they show up in their authentic self at school. So if we can take some time to talk about just two of those issues, among the other issues that directly impact women and young ladies in the district. We all know that teaching is a very female-heavy institution, and I think that some of the reason why it's treated so poorly is because it does have so many women inside of it. So if we could take those time and the moment to actually discuss and put in some policy, protective policy around our female students and our female staff. I'm complete. And President Gonzalez Hoi, just remember, we have to put the timer up because I will go a little long-winded.
Thank you so much for the reminder. Are there any other comments? Okay, let's move to the vote. We'll start with trustee Barron today.
Barron, yes.
Trustee Santos?
Santos, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Christian, yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so much. Pass this unanimously. Okay, now we're gonna move to resolution number two-two-two-three-dash-five-five, Cesar Chavez Day of Recognition, twenty-twenty-three. Ms. Sanders, is this also your item?
Yes, thank you. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the governing board of the West Contra Costa Unified School District does hereby proclaim Friday, March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, as an official day of recognition of the life and work of Cesar Chavez, encouraging all teachers to make use of the model curriculum and other supplemental Cesar Chavez resources in their teaching presentations during the month of March and beyond.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sanders. Board, can I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I move resolution number two-two-two-three-dash-fifty-five, Cesar Chavez Day of Recognition, March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Trustees, any comments? Trustee Barron?
On a brief and respectful note, I want to say this is an amazing day to have and everything. But I think it would also be good to have transparency when it comes to figures such as Cesar Chavez, because there are certain things in history that, in my opinion, should be, people should know about. I mean, everything, it's an amazing day, an amazing figure, but of course, there's history that I think should be uncovered in that. So when we continue these kinds of celebrations, I think it's important to note that we want to be transparent with people about historical figures and things like that. And again, this is a good day of recognition to have and everything, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Barron. Anyone else? Okay, let's move to a vote. Trustee Barron, we'll start with you.
Barron, yes.
Trustee Santos?
Santos, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Christian, yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so much. Pass unanimously. Okay, board, now we're gonna move to consent. I already know, trustee Phillips, you have something you would like to pull?
I would like to pull item seven.
Thank you. And trustee Phillips, I think that trustee Reckler also wants to pull it, but she also has a motion. Is it okay if we move to her and then we come back if you have an issue with it?
I'm sorry, can you say it one more time?
Sorry, trustee Reckler has a motion on C-seven that she would like to make as well. Do you want to listen to her motion? I'll come back to you if you, if you want to do some different motion.
Sure, thank you. So I'd like to pull it as well, but I'd like to insert it in between E-two and E-three, so it comes before the resolution for the implementation of the fiscal solvency plan, so the three are heard together as a, as a suite.
And trustee Reckler, I just remind you, you have to make an actual motion for that.
I move that C-seven is pulled from consent and inserted in between E-two and three action items.
Thank you. Is there a second? Do we need a second?
Yes.
Oh, yes, thank you. Okay, so let's take this action first, and then we'll continue with the consent calendar. Okay. Or, oh, if there are no objections, we can approve the motion. Is there, are there any objections?
President Gonzalez Hoi, may I ask a question or is this not the time for that?
Yeah, you can ask a question.
Dr. Hurst, if we're moving C-seven to in between E-two and three, is staff ready to present C-seven?
They are ready.
Okay, I'm complete. Thank you.
Thank you, clerk Smith Folds. Okay, I don't see any objections, so we'll approve it. Okay, so approved. Okay, board, are there any other consent items anyone would like to pull? Okay, without, without objections, can we approve the consent calendar? So approved. Thank you so much. Okay, everybody, so now we're gonna move to the superintendent communication. We actually have the student trustee report first, so I'll pass it to trustee Santos and Barron, and then we'll move to Dr. Hurst afterward, after that.
Okay, great. Thank you. So this is our trustee report by trustee Barron and then myself, so we could go on to the next slide, please. Yeah, so we kind of wanted to give a brief rundown of kind of what we've been doing, what we've been looking at in our time here. And we wanted to start that by opening with our student congress. As you guys may know, and as we've mentioned before, we are trying to get that up and running again. So we did have our first meeting January twenty-sixth. And as stated, we do want to create a foundation and we want to really build up the ASC so we can keep it going after we're out. Because we know we kind of struggled, or the past student trustee struggled last semester to get it up and running again. So we want to be sure to have a solid foundation, so that's kind of what we focused on in our first meeting. It was very introductory. We let the members kind of review the current vision and mission statements that we had, give their inputs on it. We broke down what the middle and high school cohorts look like, both during meetings and outside of meetings. So they could have an opinion on that as well. And then we opened up the Florida Future Site events, just so we can have practice rounds on how our presentations tend to work and how our sharing out time works in future meetings. And Kaylee, if you want to continue?
Yeah, during that first meeting, I believe we did discuss vision statements and mission statements. And on the right there, you can see both of them, which are not final, but it is a goal of ours in ASC this year to solidify our mission, to solidify our visions, and how we will go about that process to achieve- that, that process to achieve our mission and visions. Um, and there you can, on the right, you can see, um, both of them. Next slide, please.
Um, and then our second meeting was in February, um, February sixteenth. And this meeting, we kind of tried to go into more in-depth discussions, both on things that were currently going on in the board, things we were discussing here in the board, um, and also things that were just going on around in the community. Um, we created a presentation with, uh, trustee Barron and kind of informed all of the ASC members on what was going on, what we've been discussing. Um, some of the things mentioned was a student resource survey, uh, some site-specific input on student resources, and then also UTR, um, among other things, but we'll discuss those in a further section of this. Um, and then on the right here, Kaylee will dive more into that, but that's kind of some of the findings that we've had.
Yeah, so we also asked ASC students about, um, student resources that, um, they felt they could use more over, that they had, um, more of at their schools and um, regarding whether they had adults that they could go to for resources. Uh, when we asked, um, most students commonly said that uh, college and mental health resources, uh, were things that they would want to see more of at their schools. And most also said that they had at least one adult, um, at their schools that they could go to for resources. Although students mentioned it was mainly in the health centers and college and career centers. Um, so there was also an expressed interest in having more teachers and admin that, um, could provide resources to students. An overall ASC member said that college and health resources, uh, were the biggest resources provided, um, in their schools. Middle college, however, did bring up the fact that their school is not very much provided with many college resources, college and career readiness resources. Um, they don't have a college and career center, uh, so that's something that they mentioned personally they would want to see more of. Next slide. Um, now our next topic is a recent, a recent district discussions. Uh, so here we basically, uh, want to go a little bit more into, um, some recent, uh, topics that have been occurring since we, um, entered our positions. Um, and these, this includes DLI, uh, United Teachers of Richmond, and we stop, uh, you stop, um. Sorry, um. So sorry, I can't find my notes.
Um, yeah, so the first part of this is we kind of opened up talking about UTR. Um, it's something that we personally were really passionate on while we were on the board and we kind of wanted to express that to the other ASC members. Um, we wanted to get their input on it because we are only two people, so we really wanted to know what they felt and what they saw fit, what they saw as appropriate. Um, we talked to them about the tentative agreement, we talked to them about the voting, and then we took a poll and kind of discussed that their feelings about it, and Kaylee has more to say about that.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, uh, from the survey responses we got from ASC, uh, they largely showed support for U, uh, UTR and teacher raises in general. Uh, we asked students if they believed, uh, stu- teachers should be paid better. Um, that was one of the questions we asked, and there was mainly a yes response. Um, and some students explained how they believe teachers deserved it for the work they do despite the troubles they may face while teaching. Um, and we asked, uh, if they believed that the situation has impacted their own personal education. Um, and most people responded that, um, yes, largely because of the fact that many of their teachers could not afford uh, to continue teaching, which resulted in them leaving and students having substitutes for long periods of time and creating gaps in their education. Um, but overall, ASC members were supportive of UTR and the possibility of striking at the time.
Um, moving forward, we did talk about, oh, next slide, please. Um, we talked about the dual-language immersion program and then we also addressed, um, we stop, you stop. For DLI, we, just because of time, we did kind of just break it down and explain to them what was going on, what was happening. Um, the alleged, uh, pathway that is being created or worked on, and then promises currently being made on the board. Um, just overall things that are being stated. And just of general what that means to the community, we broke down all the people that are coming down and supporting DLI and explaining their own views on DLI. Um, just because we did want the students in ASC to be well-informed on what's going on in that regard. Um, and then we stop, you stop was also one.
Yeah, so the we stop, uh, you stop movement at Richmond High has been continuing through the hard work of BSU. They are working hard to put an end to racist language, specifically the use of the N-word, not just at RHS, but across the district as a whole. And they are eager to emphasize the importance of uplifting our community and specifically the Black community within WCCUSD and students and ending racist acts and language within our district. Um, I know they've created a QR code that they've begun giving to teachers, um, so that students can fill out, um, uh, fill out the form to report racist incidents or language that they witnessed at school, which can also be done anonymously. Um, and the Elserito BSU has also been flourishing and they presented last week to share, um, what amazing events they've been doing and their students' achievements. And they've also, uh, been continuously speaking out against a racist incidence happening at school um, and across the district, and they're fighting hard to bring awareness and proper action and justice to them. And trustee Santos and I are also hoping to start reaching out to BSUs across the district soon and, um, talk with them to get to know them better and know what we can do for them, um, and what, how we can work together to continue, um, what they want to fight for. Next slide, please. Uh, and finally, uh, we're gonna go over individual school findings. Uh, we're gonna go into, over briefly about, uh, what schools across the district have been doing and what is coming up for schools. Uh, so for Richmond High, seniors are, um, finishing up FASPA, which reminder, it's due tomorrow. And we've been working on scholarships with the help of the College and Career Readiness Center, um, which their staff has been incredibly helpful in providing resources and after-school financial aid workshops. So huge shout out to them and the work that they've been doing for students. Uh, once again, our BSU students have been working incredibly hard to continue the discussion of ending the use of racial slurs um, and actions across the district. And earlier this month, uh, they did host a climate, uh, uh, meeting discussing how they wanted to move forward um, and how we could gather support from clubs, extracurriculars at Richmond High, um, to support that and continue that. Um, and as well as the we stop, you stop movement, um, and continue to talk about why the work is powerful and amazing. And they had their rally earlier this month that went amazing and had powerful performances. Um, our GSA club is also preparing to begin a production on the play Juliet Takes a Breath, uh, which both trustee Santos and I will be participating in, along with other amazing students. Um, Richmond High also had a bush bowl discussion earlier last month, uh, regarding our decreasing SPECT testing scores, which was incredibly helpful and gathered interesting responses from students about how we can better help prepare students for SPECT testing and how to do, uh, well on it. And finally, our marching band performed at the SF Chinese New Year Parade, um, and did amazing in front of thousands of people in person and millions on TV as we represented our school and community and proudly so.
Um, and then for middle college side of things, um, our BSU also hosted a Black History Month rally and it was just last week on Friday. Um, it was great from what I've heard. I personally couldn't be there, but it, from everything everybody told me and the reports I got, it was really good. Um, also four of our seniors were the winners this year for the, um, Chevron scholarships, um, which we were really proud of them. They went to their banquet yesterday, um, and it was a hundred percent middle college students, so we're really proud of that. Um, we've continued holding, uh, culture and climate meetings with a lot of our student leaders, just to kind of address our thoughts and our opinions on things that are going both as a community in the district and then on our specific sites. Um, and then as I continue to attend those meetings, I am hoping to bring back more information that I get from those because they tend to be very insightful. Um, this, a lot of the stuff on here is actually derived from that. Um, and then our middle college, um, national consortium members or NCNC members are preparing for their conference this summer. Um, they are kind of discussing how to build a better relationship, both as a middle college, um, just to CCC and to the district, um, because sometimes we do feel distant, when, when we are in the, um, campus of CCC, it still feels a little disconnected. Um, so they are working on creating a better partnership there. Um, link crew implementations are also coming up for us. Um, we've had our teachers trained, um, in that. However, we are finally being able to implement it and get that training to our different students. And then just final thing, uh, our applications for middle college are due at the end of this month, so there's still a month left. Um, in the event that anybody listening is interested in applying or attending, um, that's just something that we're looking forward to and we're looking forward to reading applications moving forward. Um, next slide, please. And then these are some individual school sites or school site findings that we've received from the ASC schools. Um, from Helms, we talked about their leadership class and them planning different events. For example, this dance that they mentioned to us. Um, Korematsu mentioned their Valentine's Day gram sales, Sawskin mentioned gardening project starting up, and then their sports starting up as well. Um, and then Stewart also mentioned tryouts for cheerleading and additional sports, and they did mention that this is the first time that they're having cheer, and I believe other sports as well. Um, but yeah, that's just a highlight from these middle schools.
Um, and for our high schools, uh, our ASC members, uh, gave us some upcoming events, um, and some past ones. Um, Dianza has been spreading information regarding scholarships and financial aid and job opportunities for students via social media. Uh, Elserito had their homecoming dance on January twenty-eighth as well, um, as a Black History Month celebration and Spirit Week. Uh, Hercules has been providing, uh, more counseling and college workshops and also had, uh, Black History Month events along with um, an upcoming cultural rally, uh, cultural rally this month. Um, and the Pinols Girl, uh, basketball team won a title and the football team achieved its first ever state title at state championships for the first time in their history, uh, which they mentioned has uplifted their school spirit. Next slide, please.
Um, and that's kind of it. If you guys have any questions or if there's anything that you would like us to expand on, we're here. Um, yeah, thank you.
So I would like to say what an amazing job for trustee Barron and Santos. Outstanding. Thank you for summarizing everything that's happening across our district, in our schools, and the work our students are involved in. Thank you. As we're bringing up the superintendent presentation, I wanted to start off by just sharing, um, and I did see you, your hand, ma'am. Okay. Uh, I wanted to share before, as we're bringing up the presentation, a memoriam on two individuals that, uh, passed away. Um, I wanted to first, uh, mention Faith Schultz. Uh, she recently passed away on February twenty-fourth this year. She's a retired middle school teacher. Worked as a long-term substitute at Fairmont for the last decade. She loved working, she loved teaching, and she loved her students. Her incredible humor will be missed by entire school community. We also, um, had another member that passed. Counselor Monica Mendez, member of Hercules Middle School, recently passed away on February the sixteenth of this year. She started working in the district in nineteen ninety-seven as an English teacher at Adams Middle School. She then changed to a counselor at Kappa North Campus and ended at Hercules Middle School, where she worked for at least twelve years. And I just ask that, um, we continue to keep the families in our thoughts and in our prayers. Also wanted to share a report that I received, um, also, um, all our superintendents received this in the state of California. The title of the report is State Drops Plan for Student Vaccine Mandate. Um, this came out, um, February the eighth. I just want to share with you, uh, what the, what it was shared by the governor and then also what this means for us for West Contra Costa. It says on Friday, February the third, twenty twenty-three, the California Department of Public Health, CDPH, announced that it will no longer explore and make emergency rulemaking and add the COVID-nineteen vaccine to a list of required inoculations for California students to attend schools in person. Their plan will officially be dropped, which it has been dropped, when Governor Gavin Newsom, COVID-nineteen, a state of emergency, comes to an end on February the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, so it has ended. This news, which comes less than five months after the CDPH rescinded its public order requiring unvaccinated school employees to undergo weekly COVID-nineteen testing. This effectively means that there are no longer any COVID-nineteen vaccines or testing requirements that the state is enforcing upon local educational agencies. So what that means for us, we have shared in the past that we will follow state guidance and CDPH guidelines. So what that means effective as of February twenty-eighth, that West Contra Costa Unified School District no longer has a student vaccine mandate. So I wanted to share that piece with you. Going to the superintendent report, um, we did not get to the superintendent report, uh, last board meeting, so some of this is old content. So what we shared is that we would bring this report back to this meeting. Next slide. So last board meeting, I was going to just honor our hard-working counselors, so I'm gonna do that now. We want to give you a shout-out for all of the work that you do in supporting and servicing our students to achieve their goals. Next slide. Also, um, I had the opportunity to be at Elserito High School and I saw, uh, trustee Smith Folds there as well. I'm not sure if any other trustees had the opportunity to visit, but it was spectacular just to see our students engaging in fun and activities during their Special Olympics. So we want to celebrate our students. And then we also have a report that's really exciting that we wanted to turn over to Dr. McIntyre, and he wanted to share some information with us. So sir, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Uh, next slide, please. So as some of you may or may not recall, uh, a-as part of the universal meal program by the state of California, which we laud and we're very excited to be a participant of, we no longer collect free and reduced-priced meal applications from students because of universal meals. And this actually created a pretty big conflict for most school districts in California, especially school districts like West Contra Costa, where, uh, we need those free and reduced meal applications to substantiate the money we receive to fund our LCAP, our Local Control and Accountability Plan, those supplemental funds that are given to us by the state in order to meet the needs of three student groups in our population. These are, uh, the students who would typically qualify for free and reduced-priced meals. So the low socioeconomic students, the English language learners, and the foster youth within our community, the state gives us additional funding for those. And because we couldn't use the free and reduced-priced meal application as the information source for this data, uh, staff came together and put together what's called an educational benefits form, and it's basically an alternative way to validate family income. And, and I wanted to share this because it, it crossed literally every boundary and department, uh, in the organization. So we worked with our lunch people, we worked with scouts, we worked with the technology department who all made an automated survey form for families and parents, so it didn't feel so intrusive. Um, the, but the collection of this form doesn't just help us get money for the LCAP, it also helps us with funding for fee waivers for people for SAT and ACT. It qualifies students, uh, for, uh, some after-school funding. It also is the way the state was collecting information for the EBT cards and for local bus passes with the local agency. So the, the information we collected was tremendously important for bringing additional services to our students locally, not only from the district but from the local community. And as a result of the, uh, the effort this year, our unduplicated pupil percentage, our UPP number, which funds that LCAP, uh, amount, is now seventy percent. That in, in isolation is, is a great number. But literally, i-it, it means that we qualify as a district to receive sixty-point-five million dollars in supplemental and concentration grant funding for the LCAP, the Local Control and Accountability Plan. This is several percent above where we were in prior years. This is a massive, massive effort. Next slide, please. So okay, I, I guess we, we narrowed that down to one slide. So I just, I wanted to share because there's so many hands in the pot to make this work. So the scouts at each of the school sites and technology, uh, and, and, and just the team across the board. We, we didn't want to let the opportunity go without sharing their success because it's, it's gonna result in great programs for our students.
That concludes our report. We're turning back over to the president for questions. I'm sorry, Dr. McIntyre. Are you good? Yes, sir. There were a couple of more slides. I'm sorry if I cut you off.
Those were not the ones I was expecting. So we're, uh, the, the point was made and, and hopefully the people that were involved feel.
Thank you so much. I apologize.
Got it. Sorry about that. Thank you so much, uh, Dr. McIntyre, Dr. Hurst, and our student trustees. Now we're going to go to questions, um, board. Um, we do have a lot of items tonight. Um, so we'll do three questions, uh, to start, uh, and then we will do two-minute comments. Um, we'll start with trustee Reckler and then we'll work ourselves around. And again, the questions can be for student trustees or Dr. Hurst.
Thank you so much for Dr. Hurst. Um, I understand now that the state has, um, is taking no action on the student, uh, vaccine mandate. However, our resolutions and board votes also includes employees, contractors slash vendors and visitors. Would you be able to address what's happening with those, uh, groups that are, um, were receiving, uh, vaccine, vaccines, or we were asking them to?
Yes, I can, um, definitely get clarification on the adult portion. Um, I don't want to misstate anything. I did talk to your legal counsel about this. So if you allow me to come back on the adult piece, I'd appreciate that.
Great, thank you. And then on top of that, uh, the expiration of the state of emergency also changes the Brown Act. It mostly goes back to normal, but there are some exceptions. And so I'm wondering if you could also please uh, either check in with legal counsel and so that all board members understand what they need to be doing.
Absolutely, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Uh, clerk Smith Folds?
Thank you so much. I have, uh, one question for the student trustees and two for Dr. Hurst. Student trustees, were you able to get a summary from Greenwood High School, Alternative High School?
Um, we were not. Um, we are supposed to have, I believe, representatives from Greenwood. Um, but I'm not sure. I don't think they've been at the past, uh, two meetings we've hosted. Um, we have to contact, um, our advisor, test them about an update on that. Um, but, um, if we can get them to come, that will hopefully get them to show out and support them.
Dr. Hurst, can you help support with that? Making sure that Green was represented? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Dr. Hurst, I had two questions for you. The first question is, is it possible to have a summary of the Black History Month events that took place in the district? I think this is the first time in a long time that almost every school participated in some way, having a Black History Program event. So I would love for us to have a summary of those schools and what they did. And we can definitely give, um, start setting some standards.
We can get that to all the board members. Thank you.
Thank you. And I actually misspoke. I have another question for the student trustees, not you, Dr. Hurst. Um, student trustees, what are your top two priorities for the All Student Congress? Do you have some things that are your priorities?
Um, I know definitely one is making sure that it's not just a temporary thing for us to lead and it's something that can be consistent throughout. And like, and as I mentioned, when we started, um, we want to make sure it's sufficient enough to where it can stand on its own after we graduate. Um, because we've had to do a lot of going back and forth and trying to figure out who can we have as advisors? What even is the student congress? Um, so I think definitely one of our biggest goals is to lay a foundation of what it is that the student congress is and what it means to be a representative and an advocate, a member of the student congress. Um, that's definitely, I would say, our biggest priority. Kayla, I don't know if you have a second one that you want to add on that.
Um, basically repeating what, uh, trustee Santos said, we want to make sure that, well, last year was really, um, the previous trustees from, uh, last year were kind of in the process of trying to set up foundation for ASC this year. Um, but, um, when the, uh, past trustees from this fall started, it kind of crumbled. So we really want to make sure that, um, their hard work isn't just, you know, doesn't just go away. Um, and that we can really solidify this as a group that can continue after we graduate and that it doesn't once again crumble after we're done with our work and everything. So, yeah.
Thank you so very much. Um, President Gonzalez, I just have comments.
Thank you, clerk Smith Folds. Okay, I think we're going to move to comments now. Um, so, uh, we'll start with trustee Reckler and then we'll move to you.
Thank you. Just briefly, I want to thank the students for their wonderful report. Thank you. That was terrific. It's, it's great to get that summary. I really appreciate it. And then I'd like to thank everybody who worked on the, uh, the benefits forum. Uh, that is a great number, uh, both in terms of participation and the dollars it brings to the district. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you. Uh, clerk Smith Folds, we'll go to you.
Thank you so very much. I want to say to the student trustees, that was an outstanding report. It gave so much information. It was, um, it was well done all the way around. So thank you. Please reach out if you need any support in doing, uh, continuing that work because that was very, very good. Um, Dr. Hurst, I want to, um, say that I, I'm so excited about where we are and how we're, um, moving towards equity. And one of the, one of the ways we did that, what we saw was Black History Month. I want us to continue to see movement when we're looking at Women's History Month. I want us to continue moving towards, um, the equity and diversity that our district is so proud to have. Um, I want everyone to know that you don't have to take your flag down. If you want to keep that flag flying all year long, the Pan African flag, please do so. It really did impact students to see part of them every morning and every afternoon when they were in school. Um, and the neighborhoods also, we had a report from a young man that doesn't even go to WCCUSD, but he was so excited to see the Pan African flag in his neighborhood. That's amazing. Um, I would also like to hear from, uh, our OESA, hear from them and let them, uh, come and tell us how well everything went and how much work was put into it and how we can support them as a board. Thank you for your superintendent report. Again, student trustees, thank you for your outstanding report. I look forward to next, the next one. I'm complete.
Thank you, clerk Smith Folds. Uh, trustee Santos? Sorry, give us one second for the clock. I apologize.
Yeah, for sure.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Um, I just kind of wanted to readdress something that was mentioned during the student trustee report. Um, just because I really wanted to reiterate the point. Um, our ASC was really proud, a lot of the high schools were really proud of their college and career centers. Um, and I was really happy to see that, but it was also a little bittersweet because I know middle college really struggles with that. And I was just hoping to bring that point back up and just make sure that you guys are aware that that's also something that we hope to get district support with, just college and career centers. Um, I hope that it doesn't get misconstrued as our counselor is not doing enough because they're doing the absolute most and they're doing everything that they can to help us. But at the end of the day, a lot of our students are first generation and they are, um, struggling with a lot of the college and career help that they wish that they could be getting. Um, and I just want to hope that maybe we can get some assistance with that moving forward. And I wanted to add that on to the presentation, but we just, for the sake of time, I wanted to move it to comments, but thank you.
Thank you, trustee Santos. Um, trustee Baron?
Um, touching, uh, on something else similar to, uh, trustee Santos. Um, when we also bring up UTR, I also wanted to mention, uh, in February, there was Teachers of Excellence Award that were handed out. Um, oh, in February at Richmond High, one of our own teachers, um, Mr. Wilkie, uh, who is, uh, my band teacher and, um, also taught Daniela. Um, he was awarded a Teacher of Excellence Award and we are very proud of him that he has um, been achieved that. And I believe this is Richmond High's third year in a row, um, getting Teacher of Excellence Award. Um, and we're very proud of them. Um, and it goes to show, uh, when there are teachers, uh, who are excellent and give their all to our community, they are worth keeping and they are worth, um, giving them what is necessary and what they truly deserve. So, yeah, shout out to Mr. Wilkie and, uh, congratulations to the teachers who received an award last month. Thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Baron. Okay, uh, before we move forward, I just want to thank you both as well for your report. And of course, uh, Dr. Hurst, but you always do great reports. It was wonderful to see that report tonight. I really do appreciate it. Um, and the support, I'm sure that you also got from staff, but, but it was great. Um, and, uh, we do want to invite our Teachers of Excellence Award, uh, winners to come to a board meeting so we can recognize them. Um, and trustee Reckler, uh, we have gotten some uh, language, uh, from legal counsel about teleconferencing. So that's coming and we'll forward it to the full board so that you can have it. Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move now to our first action item, which is, uh, West County Mandarin School K eight expansion. Uh, Dr. Hurst, I'll pass to you.
Thanks so much, sir. Um, we have two items and I want to share with the board, um, if we could bring up the presentation, please, on the second item, because it plays into the first item as well. Also want to share with the board, uh, that there is going to be a slight, uh, change to the recommendation. And as I get to the end, uh, of the slide, I'll share with you what the slight change will be. So I wanted to just start off by sharing, um, appreciation for all the staff who have been involved in, uh, the planning, um, the conversations, um, but also the West, uh, County Mandarin School Community, um, the PTA president, I see her here. Um, uh, just appreciative for the collaboration, the, the emails, all the innovative ideas, the ideas, um, and what we want to see happen in that community and with the school. As you do, uh, know, if you were listening, there was a commitment that I shared, uh, for a K twelve, uh, opportunity for DLI and for Spanish and for Mandarin. So I will share that. We can go to the, to the next slide. Uh, many of these slides, um, are from the town hall meeting that I had personally with the West County Mandarin. I did, um, have the team update, uh, some of the slides. But we wanted to share, uh, the journey that we have been taking with, uh, West County Mandarin, uh, community. Um, we'll start off by sharing that the district did create, uh, six possible options. Uh, they held, um, a town hall meeting with both communities, Penole Middle School and West County Mandarin. Um, there was more, um, participants for the West County Mandarin Town Hall Meetings. But nevertheless, our commitment was to meet with both communities and to get their feedback. There was also, uh, surveys that were sent out to staff and to community members. And there was a joint subcommittee meeting as well that, um, consisted of participants from both communities. And there were some options that came out of that and I'll talk more specifically about that. Um, so that's going to come back. I also want to share on this slide that, uh, from all the conversation, the collaboration, surveys, um, I met with and the team, I met with board members, uh, one-on-one. And we had an opportunity to just share this same presentation and, um, what came out of the joint subcommittee meeting as well. Next slide. Uh, these were some options, um, just for your knowledge that, um, we did not go with, um, based on feedback from, uh, the West County Mandarin community. But nevertheless, there was, uh, a lot of planning from the staff's perspective. They came up with six options. The first three right here are elementary options. They're null and void now, but we want to just let you know that this is part of the planning. Next slide. There was also middle school options that was presented. This is part of the six options that I just shared. Next slide. Um, there were surveys that were sent out. Again, you can see here more than two hundred families and community members. As I shared, um, we had a commitment to collaborate and we still have a commitment to collaborate with, uh, both communities. But really specifically tonight is about West County Mandarin community. Um, again, as I shared, there was a staff survey and there was a survey that went out to the community. Next slide. So what I shared also out of that subcommittee, it consisted of, um, representatives from both community. Here are the options that, that came out of that subcommittee, uh, that I spoke about at the town hall meeting as well. So the, the two options were K through six at Penole Middle School and seventh and eighth at Betty Reed Soskins Middle School. The second option was a K through one, um, grade at Sarah and second through eighth grade at Penole Middle School. I just want to pause there. Um, we talked about that in detail and I did share with the community that I'm sure that there's a lot of questions that they have about uh, the future of West County Mandarin and how some of the operational details are going to materialize. But what I shared that, that evening and even this evening is really about, uh, the grade span and what that grade span will be, what the recommendation will be. And I also shared that there's a commitment from staff to continue to collaborate with, um, Dr. Peterson and West County Mandarin Community to continue to answer their questions. What I will share is that there was, um, the survey given there on the spot with the Midwest County Mandarin Community. And the survey results were forty point two percent, um, shared that they wanted the K through six option at Penole Middle School and seven, eight option at Betty Reed Soskins. Fifty-nine point nine percent shared the K two at Sarah and three through eight at Penole Middle School. That was from the survey that we had sent to the community and had a closing date around, uh, the middle of February. But I do want to share with you, um, that we do have a recommendation, um, that we're going to share with you. Next slide. So this is something that we went over as well, the option of Betty Reed Soskins having the seventh through eighth. Um, and I'll share with you right now, our recommendation as a district is going to be slightly different, um, what you saw in the data. But also I have the team here, we're going to speak a little bit about the specifics from an academics perspective, uh, personnel cost perspective, facilities perspective and a safety perspective. Our recommendation is that we have six through eight at Betty Reed Soskins and that we have TK through five at Penole Middle School. So that's the slightly different recommendation that we are making this evening. Again, I'll say that we are recommending as a staff TK through five at Penole Middle School and six through eight at Betty Reed Soskins. And again, we have a staff that's going to talk through that. Uh, but some of the things that we were looking at is, um, short-term costs versus long-term costs as well. Um, and you can see here, short-term costs and all we looked at here is facilities. We're going to bring on, um, executive director Sigler to talk a little bit about some of the personnel costs that we've been, uh, able to uncover right now. You can see here, long-term costs for modernization, sixty-five point five. We have some staff that's going to talk a little bit more about that as well. Next slide. So here also, we wanted to bring on some short and long-term costs for, for Sarah. And again, um, I just shared our recommendation, but here you can see the short-term cost, a hundred and seventy thousand, uh, for short-term uh, for facilities and then for long-term seventeen point four million of modernization as well. Uh, next slide. We also looked at an option, even though this wasn't, um, discussing any great detail at that town hall meeting. It did come up and I, uh, did have a brief conversation about potential placements of, uh, portables and what it would take. It would take six new portables. We did discuss this. Uh, we did have facilities look at the cost. We did have facilities look at the cost, $600,000 for purchase, $600,000 for installation, $200,000 to $500,000 for looking at pathway fencing, restriping, black type, fire alarm upgrades. So we wanted to share that piece as well. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we can zoom this in, sir, because it's, it's a PDF slide. So it's the width of the screen. Sorry, we apologize for that, sir. It is also online if you wanted to bring it up on your phone as well. Next slide. So one of the things we discussed at the town hall meeting is some of our next steps, and this would apply specifically in our recommendation as well, is to really look at a K through eight program. What does it look like? We have some K through eight programs. Of course, these dates would be adjusted from where we are right now. But really, the idea is to have the community look at K through eights, continue to look at K through eight programs as well. And even though I said TK through five will be at Penole Middle School and the six through eight would be at Betty Reed Soskins, still looking at a TK through eight program and what does it look like across the district? What are the needs, facility needs as well? And then refinement of the seven, eight program, which is actually now will be a six, eight program at Betty Reed Soskins and the facilities as well. The conversations about schedules, bell schedules, lunch, start times. Those would be conversations apart from this recommendation that we would engage in with the principal, with the community, which I shared at the town hall meeting as well. And then we also shared with that community that we would bring this back to the board. I know the board president made a commitment that we would have that conversation today, which is why we're having a conversation now. Next slide. And then we also shared this slide with the West County Mandarin School that we would use the existing spaces that we have right now for West County Mandarin. However, now considering we're giving up those split classes that would free up some space. But again, instead of it being sixth grade, it will be TK through five in those spaces. Next slide. We did bring this slide to the attention of the community as well. We did share what was spent last year on the district side and what parents paid in 2021 and 22, and then 22, 23. Next slide. And we did share a draft of the timeline. And of course, this is changing. You can see that we did a lot of engagement, as I shared, including survey information. Also, you can see that the commitment was to bring this to the board in March, March 15th. But also, again, repeating our recommendation for it to be a TK through eight status. And again, I'm just sharing with the board a grade span, TK through eight. And then we would start getting all the information out to the community, depending upon what the board decides this evening, start disseminating, disseminating information through the communication department, work with the principal and the district on a draft plan, work out the logistics for all the operational issues and questions that we have as well. And then facility transition planning. And then 24, 25 students attending prospective classes, campuses. Next slide. Now, before we go to any questions and answers, we turn it back over to the board. I do have staff and I want them to speak to certain issues. I'm going to call on Ms. Huffman first. Speaking about our recommendation TK through five from Penole Middle School and six through eight Betty Reed Soskins, if you could speak a little bit more to that. And from an academic perspective, I'd appreciate it and why we're making that recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Good evening, board, parents, community, especially our West County Mandarin families. So we made that recommendation, one, when we met with West County Mandarin, we heard a desire to have a TK and to expand to lower grades beyond Kinder. So one of our rationale was that if we move the six through eight to Betty Reed Soskins, it will allow for Penole Middle to actually house a TK. If you have the sixth grade still at Penole Middle, you do not actually have room for TK students. So we felt it would also offer a better experience for our middle school students, as Betty Reed Soskins is also a six, eight. It made sense for West County Mandarin to also be a six, eight on the same campus. Also, there is a desire, also I heard a desire, and I'll speak to that later around preschool. But as we know, the state of California is going to be lowering the age requirement for TK to age four in 25, 26. So it would allow West County Mandarin to actually grow at a much younger age or have students able to start attending at the age of four. Also, again, the six, eight middle school experience, we believe it'd be less impact to families having schools across two different parts of the city, across West County Acosta. And so we felt like the impact and the distance between Betty Reed Soskins and Penole Middle would be less of an impact for many families. Also, there's been, there was a meeting held with Betty Reed Soskins staff and they were very excited about the opportunity of West County Mandarin joining the school community. It would also offer an opportunity to participate in electives together and have a strong middle school experience. Summer Sigler can speak to that a little bit more as she had the meeting with the teachers. Also, lastly, Betty Reed Soskins has a separate building and space that's available. And so that particular building would be the West County Mandarin Building, which Ellen can speak to more, but it's really, they would also be able to have their own office space, administration space. And so it's a perfect facility for a six, eight campus. So that is also part of our rationale of why we went with a TK five and a six, eight at Betty Reed Soskins. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Also, we're going to invite our Executive Director, Summer Sigler, to speak a bit about what we've been able to uncover about personnel costs.
So the personnel costs are relatively minimal. Because the school is ideally expanding, the actual student growth of the expansion means that regardless of where the school is located, they would receive an assistant principal. And so that is the largest cost of splitting the campus is making sure there's an administrator and that's a cost that they would get anyway. So the additional cost to, if at Soskins, is really to make sure they have a clerk and that they have at least a part-time campus supervisor for support with their lunch in particular. That cost is about $63,000, give or take a little bit with the range of employees. Should they go to Sarah, the cost would actually be roughly the same at about $66,000 because it would be an additional clerk and a yard supervisor. So really, the difference in personnel based on location is a campus supervisor versus a yard supervisor. And the cost difference of that personnel is very minimal. And based on the range or experience of the person in the job could change, give or take a few thousand dollars.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sigler. Appreciate that. And I'm going to ask Mr. Fries if you could speak from a facilities perspective, you know, regarding our recommendation.
Yes, tonight, we have our Director of Construction, Ellen Mahia Hooper, who's going to speak on that, and I can add into the conversation.
So if you can click on the image of the face with the three lines. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Good evening, board and community. So there is a difference in long-term and short-term costs according to facilities, but there, that's not the full picture of what that looks like. So we did provide a rough or a magnitude estimate for what we would assume as a short-term cost. These would be general moving costs as well as setup for the facilities. Because the program at Betty Reed Soskins is a little less defined. It is slightly higher than the Sarah option. But this is mostly due to not having any sort of meetings about how the, the office space would be structured. So it's difficult for us to create an estimate. So we wanted to make sure we provided enough margin for that to be successful. As far as the long-term costs, you can see that there was a significant difference between what was estimated in the 2016 master plan. These numbers are dated. However, the Betty Reed Soskins modernization will need to occur at some point in time in the future because it's an operational site for a middle school program. And so that, that cost is, while, while noted in the slide, is not necessarily completely related to the West County Mandarin program and more that we have a building that needs facility attention. We have many buildings across our district that need facility attention and many more than we actually have funding for. And so from the facilities perspective, opening another campus that has had very minimal modernization since its construction is, is a much more costly endeavor in the long-term outlook because the modernization component there would be truly additional costs as it needs to be an operational school site.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mahia. And finally, we're going to have Mr. Booker speak from a safety perspective about our recommendation.
Good evening, Board President and Board Trustees. Based on the district's recommendation, under the TK, TK five model, Penole Middle School would not require campus safety specialist coverage based on our current security staffing allocation. Additionally, under the current configuration of the Penole site, it is very difficult to separate and manage the younger students, grades one through five, from the older population, grades six to eight. At the Betty Reed Soskins site, the sixty-eight grades would require additional CSS support based on the current security staffing allocation. So essentially, because they would be getting more students, or projected more students at Betty Reed Soskins, they would get additional safety supports. And it's easier to manage the Penole site with the TK through five model. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So what I would like to just share with the board, once again, there's two items. For the first one, our recommendation is changed so that is a TK through eight grade span. And then for the second item, the recommendation is the TK through five is at Penole Middle School. And at the six through eight is at Betty Reed Soskins. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. So board, we're going to now ask questions. But then just a reminder, after that, we're going to actually have a chance to do two actions. One, one around the expansion of the program, the second around the location. Okay, so we'll take them separately because I know there might be more discussion for the location one. So we'll start with questions. We'll start with trustee Reckler.
I'd like to start with a point of order, which is, I believe, public comment.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Thank you for the reminder. I apologize to the public. I'm still getting used to it. So we are going to move now to public comment. Thank you. Again, we're going to go one person at the John, one person on Zoom. And then each individual gets one minute and then we're going to go for 10 minutes of public comment. Staff, I'll pass to you. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, another point of order. This is just on the grade span?
Yes, thank you so much, trustee Reckler. So this is only on E1? They were combined? Okay. Since they're connected, board, would you be okay if we do 20 minutes and take all the comments for E1 and 2? All at once, since the, the public put like either E1 and E2 combined? And then after that, we'll do board for both items. Is that okay? Okay, wonderful. We'll do that. 20 minutes, both items.
Our first public comment is Natalia de Morais.
Hi, my name is Natalia. I'm in first grade and I live in Penole. And, and West County Mandarin School is, is my school. And I would like to stay till eighth grade at West County Mandarin School. Would you provide that for everyone, please? Thank, thank you.
To pick up on what Natalia said, we live in Penole. She's in first grade. I'm Jen Spozeski, her mom. And we would urge you to support West County and thank you for the momentum to the vote tonight. And as we move forward with the expansion, we ask for your support in co-creating a plan that takes into account the community voice, the leadership, that that commitment has been made and that it be carried through, that we get responses to the information that this can be an informed, co-created design process. Thank you.
Our next public comment is James Tolu. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Our next public comment is Anna Queeman. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I have a question about, you mentioned, someone mentioned there being an assistant principal. I'm wondering about special education. I'm the RSP at West County Mandarin. And I'm wondering if there would be another RSP to cover the second site? Or if I would be expected to commute back and forth? Thank you.
Thank you so much. I apologize. We don't respond to public comment, but we'll follow up with you on this question. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Cindy Wu.
Hello, President Gonzalez Oy, trustees and Superintendent Hurst. I want to thank you. I'm incredibly grateful for your willingness and responsiveness to our community's desire to be a K through eight language immersion school. And I applaud your foresight and the leadership. So please vote to approve West County Mandarin School to be a K through eight school. Ideally, we would like to be on one site together. However, I understand that there are many constraints and factors that need to be considered. We are putting our trust in you and relying on your knowledge, expertise and leadership and making the optimal decision on a site configuration to ensure that our school continues to be a successful school. Our community cares deeply about West County Mandarin School and for our school to continue to thrive. Parents and families will come and go. However, I really ask that you make the decision based on what is truly best for our school. And please set up an MOU so that we can implement. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Charles Ko. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Anna Bell and a parent from West County Mandarin, a second grader and an incoming kindergartner. So first, I want to thank the board for hearing our community and moving quickly to vote for us for K-8. And my family and I are very excited for this because this means my kids can continue in a great program for two more extended years with their friends. But for the vote on the second site selection, I asked of the board to consider the results of the district community survey and the survey of the West County Mandarin teachers and stuff. So the community has been living and breathing. So the community has been living and breathing around the school site, and we know what problem we are facing and how we can thrive better in a split site. So I understand that the Board also have their recommendation, but the recommendation is not based by being involved in the community day to day. So uh, when you're making a decision on the site, please refer and listen to our survey results and our PTA survey results and vote with our community's interest at heart. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Reyna Flores.
I'm too shy. Um. Okay. Um, hi, my name is Esther Esperanza. I am eight years old. I am in second grade at West County Mandarin School. I would like to go to West County Mandarin School to through the eighth, eighth grade.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Reyna Flores. I am a single mother of an eight years old who is in second grade at West County Mandarin School. We are a link low income family, and my daughter is an English learner, a student, and she has an IP. I am here to ask for an expansion from K to six through K to eight school. Please and thank you.
Our next public comment is Alice. Please unmute yourself and state your last name.
Uh, hi, yeah, my name's Jen Liu, and I'm a parent of two kids at West County Mandarin School. I just want to uh first thank you for the Board to approve us as K to eight. Second, I'm kind of disappointed to the recommendation that for the location. Um, the our survey showed that's not what our community wanted. Also, the TK option, my younger one is in kindergarten right now. And thus, for them, there is the solution, the Pinole Middle, the facility is built for middle school. So the solution now is build them a fence to lock them in the corner so they can have the recess. Then what's the plan for the TK? Build another cage for them? I would really like you to think, would the Board really think about all the um, all this before you make a final decision, and thank you.
Our next public comment is Eric Peterson.
Well, uh, thank you. I'm Eric Peterson, Principal of West County Mandarin, also a founding principal of the school. And it's been a great privilege in these last six years to be part of this uh community and to serve the district in this way. Um, and only its sixth year, West County Mandarin School is diverse school. In fact, it's the only school in West Contra Costa United School District where we are required, and we're very proud of this requirement. We embrace it to uh have a preference in enrollment for students who are low income, English learners or foster youth. Um, we're also a school, um, that's the only Mandarin immersion IB public school in California, in the entire state. This is a real special thing. We've worked very hard and really shines well for our whole district. I'm really proud to have been part of this. Um, and then also, last year, we were one of only four schools in the county to earn the Pivotal Practices Award from the state um, for innovative practices. It was a version of Distinguished School Award. So I'm running out of time, but my key thing is, we need a
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Uh, I was listening to the presentation, the documentation in our relation to the Mandarin School. And it just had me thinking, um, what about the school that I work at? Because we're talking about money. Yeah, I know that in the documentation, the presentation, there's this question about the funding to make the things happen for other Mandarin school. Um, I will be going back and I will share with my students what I heard tonight. One thing that they're gonna say at Kennedy is what about us? So the reason I'm really speaking is just to say, hey, I get it with the Mandarin School, and it's a wonderful program, and um it should be supported, but your students at Kennedy should be supported too. So at a minimum, I'm not sure when the last time anybody has come and spoken to our students about what the situation is and the progress is. But it would be wonderful that some of those of you who are decision makers would make a visit to Kennedy High School and speak to our students so they can hear information firsthand versus rumors in the streets about what's gonna be going on at Kennedy. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Himena.
Hi, my name is Himena. Ni hao, wu de mi shi 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 mei. I'm in second grade. I want to help my school. I'm in West County Mandarin School. Get to eighth grade. Thank you. Xie xie ni.
Our next public comment is Marlen Vazquez. Please unmute yourself.
Um, hello, everyone at um on the Board and and Dr. Hurst. I just, um, I wanted to say that I have two kids. I have a fifth grader and a first grader. And when the initial vote was K through three at Sarah, I actually voted for K through three at Sarah, knowing that my little one would be going there. Um, I don't think Pinole Middle School is the best site for young kids. My older one went to Sarah, and it felt like a young learning community. Um, I have not felt that way with my first grader at Pinole Middle. Um, and I agree with the separation of students and I think that, so again, I've wanted it to be a Sarah, thinking that my little one was going to go there, and we would be split between Pinole Middle and Sarah. I think it is a better campus. Um, and Betty Reed Soskin concerns me for multiple reasons, but one is also traffic analysis, which I haven't really heard a lot about that. Um, I feel like a lot of factors need to be taken into consideration before a decision is made. Thank you. Bye.
Our next public comment is Jin Wei Zhang.
Uh, thank, thank you for the superintendent and the trustees. I'm a parent of a fourth grader of a the West County Mandarin School. I'm here to ask your support uh expanding our school to K eight. Thank you for the support and also listen to our voice. Uh, we will promise the with a permanent side many years ago, but it has been a very tough road. We felt like a fostered child in the district who's not being loved because our kids are from all over the district. Not a single, um, not just from a single one with the five trustee. And today is another example, and we had our survey, and the district also did the survey. And uh, in the our survey, two third of parents voted for the Sarah side instead of Soskin side. And uh, we cannot afford to share another
Please conclude your comment.
Thank you. You you can send us more comments if you would like to. Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Hu Yang. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm, my name is Quinley, and I'm a fifth grader at West County Mandarin School. Um, I really enjoyed going to this school last year. Uh, me and my friend started uh the first ever student club at our school, the Environmental Club. And um, I've had a really good experience at this school and learning Mandarin, and our teachers are wonderful, and our staff is really caring. So uh, if we could do K to eight, that would be wonderful because my next year is going to be sixth grade. And if that's the end year, I would be pretty sad. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Laura Morris.
Two minutes would have been fair. I wanna thank um the Board, the district, and the people who fought so hard to create West County Mandarin, like Cindy Wu and Dr. Peterson and many of the parents here. Because it offers a bilingual education and a public education, comes with tremendous advantages for students throughout the district. So thank you. It's amazing. I also want to ask why the district is recommending this despite having done a survey in which an overwhelming majority prefer Sarah. I want to beg the district to consider the families that fought so hard to create this school as real constituents. And over fifty percent more people, double the people in your survey, voted for Sarah and an even greater margin on the PTA survey. So I'm left wondering why the surveys were done if those voices weren't to be considered. Thank you.
Our next public comment is James Tualu. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Hello? Our next public comment is Brayden Anthony Chen. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, uh, my name is Philip Chen. I'm a parent of twin, great uh five uh boys, Anthony and Brayden. Uh, we live on the southern Alserito border, and we have been attending uh West County Mandarin School since its inception when we, when we were in kindergarten. It's an amazing school where everybody has access to high quality education. One of my favorite movies is Field of Dreams. If you build it, he will come. Well, if you build it, they will come, and a lot of people come. Now, we have wait lists, and we're too, we've outgrown our school. Um, but it doesn't make sense to split us across two different middle schools where we feel like we're second class, we're second to get, we don't have access to facilities. Somebody else, the other school owns the facilities. And I don't understand why the district is ignoring all the surveys that were done. What was the point of all the surveys if they're not going to listen?
Our next public comment is Erin Morrissey.
Hi, my name is Erin Morrissey.
And my name is Galena Arthur Andres.
We are in third, we are third graders at WCMS. I mean,
we really like our teachers. They are really funny.
Um, we would like to continue to eighth grade.
Please vote WCMS K through eight.
Um, please give us the expansion of funding it needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Rochelle Morrissey, the WCMS PTA president. Thank you all again for all the time you've taken for our school. And again, I think we just want to echo with whatever plan you decide, we'd really like to see it well thought out and planned and funded and to get this done quickly. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Ken Wong.
All right, uh, thank you for, you know, the Board members and district staff for all of your hard work on on this. It's been, I know it's been a difficult um process. I'm a parent of a first grader at West County, and I'm also a PTA member. And I'm here to urge you to vote a yes for the K through eight program expansion. And also to reiterate, uh, to ask for a viable financial plan. You know, assuming you do vote for K through eight, uh, and whichever site you choose, you know, we need, we need a plan. And like, uh, Rochelle said, we need it soon. And we need MOUs, you know, for if we're going to be sharing spaces. And we hope you can do that in the next, you know, thirty days or so. Um, and answer the questions that the community has been asking of you since December. And then finally, oh, yep, and thank you.
Our next public comment is Su Jin Jazz.
Good evening. I know I have a minute, so I'm gonna be quick and to the point. I'm Su Jin Jazz. I'm the district's DL cap chair. I'm an ASAP member. I have a PhD in education policy. I'm the CEO of an education research and policy org. I study school boards and governance in districts. Um, and most importantly, though, I'm a mom of two kids at West County Mandarin School, a fifth grader, a second grader. I've been before you a lot when we started this school, tried to get launched. Um, and I have to say, I'm appalled at the recommendation today. The six through eight plan is really hard for us, for families that will not go to Soskin. And a third of the families that did that survey said they would not. So then we leave that fifth grade, we go back to our home schools for one year, and then we go to middle school. That is crazy. That makes no sense to most of us. We said seventy-four percent said we prefer Sarah. The district makes another choice. You have picked the choice that is bad for black and brown families, that is more expensive, and that communities don't want. Why? The reasons that were given don't make sense, and they also apply the pluses to Sarah. So make it make sense.
And our last public comment on this item is Jason Brooks.
First of all, thank you, Board, for the location you chose. I'm a Pinole resident, a former um attendee of um the school formerly known as Juan Crespi Jr. High School. Thank you for moving it to Soskins. Um, I like the fact that you keep the location of the kids centralized. And moving forward, the kids will be close enough to where his kids can stay at the school. I read something previously that um kids in immersion schools, they really don't pick up the language until like the third grade. So therefore, the kids K through to get to the third grade, they'll get the chance to stay together, right? At least they get to the third grade and the kid, and the parents get the chance to change schools. Um, also, the geographic location, be it traffic getting back to Sarah, that's a crazy commute. And I thank you for moving, once the school moved to Pinole, you guys are keeping it in Pinole. And I think that's important, because if you moved it again, you're gonna lose kids, the kids going forward. And and now the new kids, they can stay and continue on. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much to the public uh for being here. Uh, Board, now we're gonna move to questions. Um, so we we're like taking two items, which is uh different than usual. So uh, we'll expand to five questions um uh to start uh from the Board. Um, and then from there, we will take two motions, two separate motions, but we're gonna take each item separately, uh, so we don't get confused. Um, so we'll start with questions. Um, who would like to start?
President Gonzalez Oy, I have a point of order.
Sure, go ahead, Clark Smith.
And this is a parliamentarian question. Do we need to alter the agenda at all if we go with the recommendation of the superintendent? The agenda said we're taking action on K eight expansion. The superintendent and the district are suggesting TK. Do we need to do anything by a motion to alter that, or are we okay taking action tonight? Thank you for that. We're okay. Okay. I'm complete. Thank you for that. We're okay. Okay. I'm complete, President Gonzalez.
Thank you, Clerk Smith. I hadn't even thought of that. Okay, we're going to go to questions. Is there anyone who'd like to start? Trustee Phillips, then we'll move this way.
Thank you, President Gonzalez. My first question is to the superintendent. In your meetings with the school community, did you share with them at any time your original recommendation to the board?
Yes, sir, I did. I actually started off a part of the meeting sharing that I met with board members individually, almost all the board members, and shared their thinking as well, which was the same thing as what I recommended with the exception of the TK option. There was one board member that did not share that same thing. And it was more about portables on a singular campus. But absolutely, I shared precisely what each board member said and what the district was recommending as well.
Just to clarify, you shared with them this recommendation or what your original recommendation was?
Yes, the original recommendation did not include the TK portion. It was just a K. So it was K through six and then the seven, eight at Betty Reed Soskins.
So you, did you share with them your original recommendation?
Yes, sir.
The new recommendation that you're making tonight strike that. Did they give you feedback on their original recommendation after you shared it?
Yeah, I think we went over in the meeting probably about by an hour. And I just stayed just to listen. And there were proponents on each side. Some were advocates for Sarah, as we hear tonight, and then some were advocates for Betty Reed Soskins.
Did you go back and share with them your new recommendation before bringing it to the board?
I did not, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Trustee Reckler?
Thank you. So first, I have a clarifying question. Would you be able to clarify exactly the preschool TK? One is being phased out, I guess. And then I guess I want to understand that better and also the year that that happens.
Yes, Ms. Huffman is going to explain the TK pre-K.
Well, for TK, currently we have TK, the age is five. In twenty-five, twenty-six, that will go down to the age four. So currently preschool covers ages three through five. So the TK will actually be taking some of those four-year-olds and if parents choose to, and actually moving into a TK program. TK is also still considered part of the early education programs. You have TK Head Start and then our state preschools.
Okay, so one more clarifying question. I'm sorry. So we, the grade, the ages would be covered just due to the state, the state's action, correct?
That is correct. So currently TK is for five-year-olds, homey to cut off, the age cutoff. And then in twenty-five, twenty-six, TK will go down to our four-year-olds. So our preschool programs would still cover three-year-olds, our TK program. So if West County Mandarin decides, or the board votes for TK in twenty-five, twenty-six, they'll be able to enroll four-year-olds into their program.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask either Ms. Huffman or Dr. Peterson, is there demand for a TK program?
Mr. Peterson, sorry, can you come to the mic, please? So that the community can hear you. Sorry, you have a great teacher voice. I'm in the Zoom community.
Yeah, so yeah, there's definitely demand for TK. My only concern with the TK at Pinot Middle site is that if it's, if we're going to already, if TK is already moving the eligibility to a lower age, is just one class enough? Because there's not really a lot of space there for more than one TK class based on the demand. So we'd have to decide who would get in to that one class, if it's just room for one class. I guess that's, that's my concern. I love the idea. I'm just concerned about, is this going to be kind of just like a token kind of TK class that's only some people can get into? Or, and then the rest would start in kindergarten that couldn't get into the TK? I guess that's my question.
So maybe.
I'm not against it.
So maybe if I could separate the facilities discussion from the demand discussion, put the facility on the side, is there demand for a Mandarin immersion TK program?
TK is even a preschool program, there's demand, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Was that it, trustee Reckler?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions on this side? Clerk Smith Folds?
Um, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. As I know it, doesn't TK start with four-year-olds and kindergarten starts with five-year-olds? They're just moving the birthday? They're moving the birthday requirement?
Yes, there are some. I have to look up exactly the birth date. So you could be typically, and Ellen, you might know right away off your head more than me, so I'm going to let you in. I don't know if I know off the top of my head the birthday requirements. You can be somewhere around four and a half, but they're lowering it even further to where you can just essentially be three, getting ready to turn four. So they're still lowering it almost a year in terms of the age requirement by twenty-five, twenty-six. So typically, when you're entering TK, you're about to turn five at some point when you're in TK. So the age requirement does lower about a year, but that doesn't take place until twenty-five, twenty-six. I can send you the exact age requirements and how that falls. I just don't have it all on the top of my head. Ellen might remember some of it a little bit quicker than me, just because we've been doing all the TK expansion.
Thank you so much.
So originally TK was open to all students that were born. Basically, they were going to turn five in September through December. Every year, or every year that has been reduced by another three months. So basically, every, every year that keeps moving back another three months until you get to the point where as of, I believe, September first, you become four, you would be eligible for TK. And so that's, that's where we are in the transition. So right now, we're, we're at four and a half. The year, next year, we'll be at basically four and a quarter, and then you go down four.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you for the clarification, both of you. My second question is, and maybe this is for Mr. Freezer Superintendent Hurst. At Sarah, would there be a displacement? Would people have, would you have to give up any kind of classrooms if you moved to Sarah? Or was there a displacement at all at Sarah?
So currently, the Sarah campus is occupied by administrative staff and adult education.
So there would be some movement?
Displacement.
Okay, thank you so much. That's all of, those are the two. I think that my other colleagues answered the other ones.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Any additional questions? Okay, Board, so now we're going to move to our actions. So we first need a motion on the first action item, which is E one. So this is the question about do we want to expand the program TK through eight? And then after that, we will take another action on the location. So could I please have a motion, Clerk Smith Folds, on this?
I move that we expand West County Mandarin School to TK through eight.
Reckler will second.
Thank you. Board, are there any comments on this, on this motion? Trustee Reckler?
Just many of the comments that I made last week. You know, it's not optional for any of us to be, speak one language anymore. China is a rising superpower, and it's expected that they're going to eclipse the United States in gross domestic product by twenty, sometime between twenty thirty and twenty sixty. There, we have to graduate students that are culturally competent and speak Mandarin and are ready to engage in the new world, and this is within those students' lifetime. So yes, absolutely.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Trustee Phillips?
So I support the expansion of the school from TK to eight. But we've had this conversation multiple times over multiple boards. And I think it would be a good idea to figure out the facilities issues before we keep expanding. And so maybe we're even doing the items in reverse. But I do support the expansion. I have no problem with it. I think it's a great idea. But I think you, we have to figure out the facility issue first. That's how we keep getting in trouble every time this comes to the board, is we do it backwards.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. So we have a motion on the floor. So I mean, we're about to take on the question about the location. So we'll just continue with the motion, but we'll, we'll go to the location right now, right? As soon as we end this. I do have a comment, which is I want to appreciate the families who are here and have continued to be in the program. And it's honestly because of you, Mr. Peterson, that you continue to be such a strong voice. I've talked to my wife, and we hope that we one day enroll our daughter, who's four months old, so not yet, into the program. Because I saw examples tonight of trilingual students, which is incredible. And those are the students who you're could bring through the program. So I'm incredibly thankful for what you're doing. I think that it's a program that is bringing in a lot of students into our district, which is a change for us and for a while. So, so thank you. And of course, I will support this motion from Clerk Smith Folds and trustee Reckler. Okay, I don't see any more hands, so let's move to the, to the motion. Again, the motion is to officially extend the program to be at TK through eighth grade. So we'll start with trustee Baron.
Baron, yes.
Thank you, trustee Santos.
Santos, yay.
Thank you, clerk Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Christian, yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm a yes. It's a unanimous yes. Thank you so much. Now, Board, we are now taking the question about the location. We've heard the staff's recommendation as well as two options that are possibly viable. Board, is there a motion on the floor that anyone would like to make? Trustee Reckler?
I'm going to put a motion on the floor that the location gets tabled until more details are fleshed out on this program. I heard about it like maybe an hour before we walked in here. I certainly have questions. I'm sure the community has questions. I'm also not sure, I mean, I've always felt like we're trying to shove an academic program into a location instead of looking at the academic program and then trying to figure out the location. And I think there are a ton of details that need to get figured out. You know, I trusted, I think we all, I'll just speak for myself. I trusted heavily that when the school moved to Pinot, it was going to be okay, and it wasn't at all. There were many issues, and I would like that not to be repeated. And so my motion is to table at a time, until a time that maybe the superintendent can tell us right now, when he could come out, come back with a good plan. He can't. Okay, well, then I would table until some of the, some of the details are fleshed out.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, are you going to second?
I would like to second the motion, but I would just like to make some comments first. So I would, and I know that you don't discuss the motion.
Right, but sorry, I shouldn't have let trustee Reckler discuss it either. I apologize.
You're right, you shouldn't.
So, but to be equitable, I'll let you speak on it now because I didn't stop trustee Reckler. So please go ahead.
So I think, well, I already said what I thought about the process and what trustee Reckler just said, just kind of reaffirmed that. But my concern in this discussion on this evening is if we're going to have a collaborative community process, then I think that that's what it should be. And so I think what happened in this situation is that we had these community meetings, and then they were told that, you know, this is what the recommendation is. And then they get here tonight and they basically hear something new for the first time and don't really have an opportunity to really give the feedback. I'm not even necessarily saying I'm against the option. I do have some concerns about it that I could talk about at a later time. But I think that the loop should be closed, the community portion of it, that loop should be closed. And if this is the recommendation after that, then I'm fine, and we can discuss it and the board could vote. But I just think that the train kind of jumped the track on this one. That's my only comment.
Thank you. Clerk Smith Folds?
To help with a little clarification with the board, I've been to the community meetings that Mandarin School and Pinot have hosted that, or let me re, let me rephrase that, the community meetings that the district has hosted at West County Mandarin and at Pinot Middle School. I think that what a large part of the population also wants is just a decision. I've heard that from some of the community members that they really want the district to make a decision, so then they can start making plans. And that community doesn't drop out when you're making the plans. The community is more folded in when you're making the plans, because that is something that was, that will be different than what happened when the move to Pinot happened. So I think that if the board is concerned that there's there's a lack of community involvement, I think the district has made it clear that once a decision is made and the community has said they really want a decision so they can start planning and be co-governance, when the planning has happened, I think it's imperative that we make a decision tonight, and then we can start planning so the community can have input and choices. I'm complete.
Thank you, clerk Smith Folds. So for me, I definitely hear what you're both sharing, and I think that I saw the experience in the past about the move to Pinot Middle School, not as a parent or as a teacher there, but as a community member, I do think that a lot of things fell through the cracks. A lot of promises were made that never occurred, right, and were broken, including a full location for the full program, which cannot actually happen because we don't have an actual location or for the full program. So I agree about when things are done backwards. And at the same time, I do worry about the timeline. If it ends up being Betty Reed Soskins that we agreed, and so being six, eight, the work needs to start now for the facilities upgrades and facilities needs. I do think that our community has been, you know, very outspoken about what they want and the wishes that they, that they share. I do think that we have to do it differently than what happened at Pinot Middle School. And I think I've heard Dr. Hurst committing to do it differently. Now, if he proves us wrong, then that's a different story, right? But I think he has committed with our community to do that, including just being present two weeks ago and, or three weeks ago at their community meeting. So, you know, and I think that some of us will, you know, volunteer to participate in some of the listening sessions as well. And maybe even touring Betty Reed or Sarah, whatever location we choose with community, right, to see it. I do worry about waiting. I think that there's a lot of questions unanswered, once the location is chosen, administration, program, shared resources. So I do worry about, about that and waiting. When we did, I did hear, there's someone that's here tonight, I actually heard from a large part of the community that they wanted the vote tonight. That's, that's what we heard. So, so I don't know. That's my hesitation. I know Superintendent Hurst wants to say something, and then we'll take on the question.
Thanks, sir. I just wanted to just clarify. One, thank you so much, Board, for all of your comments. Definitely listening intently. I did want to clarify, one, that this has been one of the most collaborative processes that we've engaged in since I've been here. We've been working with the West County Mandarin community and the Pinot Middle community intently. And we have gone back when we And we have gone back when we listened to them and we looked at the surveys. And it wasn't what they wanted. We came back and formed a subcommittee. And really, really listened. So I would, would like to clarify that I do not feel that we're doing things backwards. I do feel that we've been extremely collaborative. And I do feel that we have taken a program into consideration as well. What I will share. Behind the scenes, staff. Has explored. All options for. Location. As we look across the district, there's not a lot of options. What we tried to share with you this evening. Is that the portable option is not an option. Right now, right? So. We have to look at what's available. So when we hear you say that we have done things backwards or put the. Carpe before the horse, that's just absolutely not true. So I want to just share that the staff has worked hard and have been very collaborative. And I believe that they've done everything that we. Certainly, I think what the board expects. And I want to share also just the reality of the work. I've shared many times. But there's a lot of work to do. There's the vision, mission, there's goals. And. We came here for a decision to be made by the board. We put a lot of time into the presentation with the community. I would like to hear that decision be made also on the site because. There are commitments that we have to attend to across the district. One being the DLI. CTE. Equity. There's a number of different issues and there's limited time for our staff. So I'm as a superintendent asking for a decision based on our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Board, I will introduce another motion. I'll make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation to have TK through five at Pinole Middle School. And six through eight. Betty Reed Soskins.
Smith Folds, second.
Thank you. Are there any comments on this motion before we move to votes? Trustee Phillips, you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Okay. So board, we vote on the second motion first? Correct? Yes, okay. Just double checking. So we, we vote on the second motion first, which is. My motion with the second from Clerk Smith Folds on voting for the recommendation from staff. So we'll start with trustee Baron.
Baron, yes.
Thank you, trustee Santos.
Santos abstain.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Christian, yes.
Trustee. Reckler?
Reckler, no.
Trustee Phillips?
No.
And I'm a yes. So the motion passes. Thank you so much, everybody who came for this item. We're moving forward with the staff recommendation. Board, we are now moving to item E3. Resolution number 2223 dash five, six. Implementation of a fiscal solvency plan. And. Dr. Hurst and Dr. McIntyre, is this your item?
Yes, Dr. McIntyre. Thank you so much, sir.
I'm sorry, I have a point of order.
Yes, thank you.
May we please do the 2022, 2023 budget revision after second interim to satisfy, satisfy county office of education oversight requirements first, please? It was the consent item pulled.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was your motion not to put it in between E2 and E3? I mean, E3 and E4?
Between two and three.
Oh, okay. I apologize for that.
I, I believe it's the kickoff to the discussion, assuming because it was in consent.
Got it. Okay. Sorry about that. I think I just misunderstood your motion.
That's no problem.
President Gonzalez, I have a point of. Ms. Tammy, please fill in. Can we take a three minute potty break before we start? This entire emotion and that we take a three to a five minute break before we start these next action items?
Okay, I'll second.
Thank you.
With no objection, we'll move to a break for five minutes. And we'll come back at nine, 11:00. Okay, so move. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, President Gonzalez.
As an organization, I know the board has been very outspoken about wanting to have a positive budget certification to stay there. And, and the, and the county really stepped up with measures that they felt would be the best in class practices. To help us achieve that before the, the board votes on the contract with the United Teachers of Richmond this evening. And so that's what we're looking at with both C7 and E3 tonight, starting with C7. This item. Really, i- it provides all the budget adjustments that the district had to make between first interim. And, and before it can vote on E4 tonight. That, that would be necessary to demonstrate that we can afford. What we're proposing in, in the settlement agreement or ratifying the agreement with the United Teachers of Richmond. And, and any ancillary impacts due to clauses that have what we call me too clauses. Where other labor units would benefit from the success of the, the teachers at the bargaining table as a result. And so when you look at the supporting documentation tonight. We see that we provided the county and it's provided for our stakeholders as well in the attachments. The multi-year projections. Where we show the increases in the costs. Of salaries and benefits at each line item. So increases in certificated salaries. Classified salaries and benefits as a result of the salaries increasing statutory benefits. For all three years. And what the impact to our fund balance would be in order to. To cover that. One thing of note is that we, we are not, in, in order to accomplish this. The whole time the district has been bargaining with each of the bargaining units, every time the offer has been increased. To try to meet labor's needs, given the high inflation environment we've been in. Staff has been continually working to kind of chase that action by finding appropriate reductions in expenditures to match. So that way we can try to remain as close to budget neutral as we can. And so what you see here in all the budget adjustments with the increases in salaries, increases in benefits, you see pretty massive decreases. In expenditures and the services and other operating categories. And, and also you see in year three, 2425, we would require a contribution from Fund 17. Of 19.8 million dollars. That's the current plan to meet the fiscal requirements. Fund 17 is our fiscal solvency plan. It is a one-time source of money. That the board has set aside for economic calamity. Just because it's in this plan that we, that we need that money today, doesn't mean we will not continue to strive to make the adjustments for next year. And the following year, so we wouldn't have to access that. But until we identify those future reductions that we have yet to identify up until today. We have to demonstrate that we can meet the demands of the commitment that's before us. And that's what you see in the multi-year projection. Here before you. There's also a PowerPoint attached. That includes the me twos for all the units. So you see that while, while first interim actually only goes through the actual expenditures. Only goes through October 31st and, and the second interim report, which you're actually going to get at the next board meeting. This is kind of a weird scheduling conflict for us. Actually only includes the actual expenditures through January 31st. What you're seeing here today actually includes expenditures up and up into the middle of February. And so we, we've got actually more current data. In these numbers than what you'll see at second interim report next week in order to help the county best assess. What we're trying to substantiate and demonstrate that we're trying, trying to accomplish. And so what you see is the increases, if you look at the PowerPoint presentation on slide three. You'll see that, for example, we see certificated salaries on the going up. 6.8 million dollars, classified salaries going up 1.7. And employees going, I'm sorry, classified going up 188,000. And then employee benefits going up 1.8 million. This is only, the, the reason these numbers look low is because we've already filed the county disclosures for the Teamsters. And for SSA, our, our, our clerical management unit in previous filings. So tonight, we're really only looking at the financial changes since then, the more recent. So in the assumptions that you're looking at for changes tonight, we include UTR. Management and confidential. Now, board has given direction on confidential and UTR. We haven't settled management. So we did make some assumptions. Kind of worst case, I wouldn't say worst case, best case scenario for those staffs. But it leaves the board the flexibility they need to, to, to decide that one as well within the parameters of what we have here. So what we see is the increase in expenditures of roughly 8.7 million dollars. On slide three. And then slide four, we see what that means to the unrestricted general fund balance. As components of the ending fund balance for the current year. And what that's going to mean for us. And you see, we have a relatively healthy fund balance because we don't need to touch Fund 17 in the current year. We're talking about touching that in 2425. And because we've received those three grants that we've talked about several times this year, that restricted fund balance is actually quite large. So we're talking about the emergency learning loss block grant, the arts, music and instructional materials block grant. As long as, as well as the expanded learning opportunity grant. That's why the restricted fund balances look so high.
Excuse me, Dr. McIntyre. President Gonzalez, I have a point of order.
Yes, Clerk Smith Folds.
Is there any way we can pull this presentation up for the people on Zoom to be able to see?
Dr. McIntyre, can you, are you able to do that?
If you give me a second, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pardon the interruption.
Okay, great. Hopefully, there we go. Okay, so as one of the attachments, we actually have a PowerPoint and I know nothing. But anybody loves more than coming to a board meeting and seeing yet another PowerPoint. But we did feel like demonstrating the changes in numbers. Outside of those government forms that were required to use. In, in kind of a bigger format, plain language format would be easier for the general public to follow. And of course. Our continual goal is always transparency rather than creating these systems that are so difficult to follow that nobody really knows what we're doing. So that's why we included the PowerPoint attachment, although, you know, I'm probably the only person excited by the PowerPoint. So we did want to make it very clear, the time period. That we're, that we're looking at the, the actual data from. The fact that we're looking at the cost of the disclosure for the United Teachers of Richmond, confidential and non-represented management in the AB 1200 disclosure. That accompanies all of the documents this evening. For those who don't live in school finance, the Assembly Bill 1200. It is a bill that requires the county to actually review our financials quarterly. As well as if we're, if we're getting tight financially, they're required to review any proposed salary increases to staff before the board votes on it. And so we, we have submitted all those documents, including the documents you see attached here tonight to the county. The county did issue their AB 1200 response letter. Concurring that if we do item C7 and E3 before you vote on the contract for the United Teachers of Richmond. That they concur with the positive budget certification that we attached to the documentations. So that, that is of course the highest that they can give us. This is despite the recent language and conversations and letters we've received from the county in recent weeks. So I think we've taken all the steps we can to demonstrate fidelity. Along the way as an organization and partnered with the county to do that. And we have very much appreciated their support and clarity. Along the way, because this, they could have made it so much harder for us than they did. Their staff has been tremendous. So moving on to the next page, what we see, I was trying to make it a little bigger. What we see on the next page. Is the changes in expenditures tied to just, just the three groups we're talking about tonight, UTR. Non-represented and confidential. And so we see that the certificated salaries that go up roughly 6.8 million dollars for this year. We see that classified salaries would go up just shy of $200,000 and employee benefits would go up about 1.7 million dollars. So this is total increases. Of 8,758,219 dollars to expenditures in the current year. So we know obviously that's going to change the fund balance as a result. So where we thought we were going to have, end the year with 109 million dollars in the ending fund balance for the general fund. Now we're looking at closer to 100.3 million. In the ending fund balance. That sounds like a massive amount of money and I really hate to give numbers out like that without context. And so what you see here in the next slide. Is that large number broken down by restricted and unrestricted. And the reason we do that is because out of that 100.3 million dollars, 70.7 million dollars of that is restricted dollars. So we can't just use that, that fund balance to give a blanket fund rate, pay raise. And so when you see these massive numbers, it can be misleading that we can afford to do a million different things. No, those restricted dollars can only be used for the purpose for which they were given to us, not for a general salary increase. When we look at the unrestricted side of the budget, this is the area of the budget where the board has complete discretion. And can use the money for any purpose. And so what we see is we believe we're going to end the year with, with the. Enough to cover the required 3% reserve for economic uncertainty. That's at 15.1 million dollars you see in the second line. And that there'll be a little bit left over about 14.2 million dollars unassigned. Left over for future year solvency. So that's important to recognize. So that brings us to a total of 29.6 million dollars. In the unrestricted general fund at the end of this year that we expect to end the year with, and we expect to. Have in the entire Fund 17 intact for out-year solvency. Which we actually need when we look at the multi-year projection. So when we look at the multi-year projection. It looks like we're going to deficit spend about 10 million dollars next year. Which is going to bring the ending fund balance, unrestricted general fund balance down by that 10 million dollars. And, and so we are going to have a much smaller number there. We look at year three, we look like we're kind of operationally neutral. I know these are big numbers and 1.6 million dollars is not nothing. But we, we have to recognize that, that it's, it's, we would consider this operationally neutral in the scale of the numbers we're looking at. And it only appears to be operationally neutral because we're transferring in 19.8 million dollars from Fund 37 to bring it there. And so that's why when we look at the solvency resolution and that's going to be in the next agenda item. We're mostly talking about how we're going to deal with that 19.8 million dollars. In year 2425. For the next item. So finally, what we wanted to show is what the true impact across the fund balance is and what the fun funding. Would be, what the balance would be in each fund as a result of operations and the current plan. And so you can see the fund balance across the three years of time as a result of operations. Which portion is in the unrestricted fund balance, which portion is in the restricted fund balance for each of the three years? And then finally, what's left in Fund 17 as a result. The goal of Fund 17 was to set aside 9% at one time to have available for economic slowdown. And the fact that we're touching it. In our current plan, absent an economic slowdown is why we have the next agenda item after this one to try to address that before. We actually need to access those funds. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on this agenda item.
Thank you so much, Dr. McIntyre. Board, we're going to now transition to questions. We're doing three questions each. Trustee Reckler?
I'm sorry, a point of order. I don't see anybody here, but there might be.
I'm so sorry. Thank you for reminding me. I'm doing so poorly on that. I really appreciate you for that. Do we have any public comment on this item? And members of the public who are raising their hand, it is only on this item. So please keep that in mind. If we can bring up the clock to one minute. And then we can call the public. Thank you.
Our first public comment is Nona Cohen Bowman. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself. Next public comment is Jean Kinstler. Please unmute yourself.
Good morning, everybody, or not morning. Good Lord. Good evening, board. I'm listening to Mr. Freeze's presentation and thinking about trustee Phillips. Asking that all of the cola money go to all of the unions equally. And yes, UTR was offered. Less than equal for Teamsters, but now it is now equal. Where did all that cola money go? You told him that the cola money didn't exist, so he could not put forth a. I forgot what it is, but he wanted to say, hey, let's vote on using all the cola money for all of the employees across the district. Where is the cola money? Where is the cola money?
Thank you. And just a public note, uh the presentation was now by Dr. McIntyre. Uh who's our CBO, Mr. Freezes, our head of facilities. Um just for clarification, thank you so much for the comment. Um we're gonna now move to questions. Board, does anyone have questions on this item? Uh trustee Reckler?
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions on the A B twelve hundred form. Item G. Financial impact of proposed agreement in subsequent fiscal years is blank. I- is there something that needs to go in there?
So in 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 it would be most appropriate to talk about the A B twelve hundred disclosure form on item E four that's attached to the actual uh the actual uh document that substantiates the U T R contract. So in item C seven, we're talking about just the budget adjustments that underlie the numbers you see in A B twelve hundred disclosure. Or I could I could cross back and forth. I just wanted to be very clear so people knew which which attachments to look at.
So I'm looking at form for public disclosure of proposed collective bargaining agreement, A B twelve hundred.
Okay, so i- if you look in the in F, we lay out the the multi-year impact. And the uh county will rely on the attached financial statements with the multi-year uh which which actually the multi-year from item C seven was a supporting documentation that answers uh item G in the A B twelve hundred disclosure.
So that, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Uh this might be the same answer in the summary of proposed agreement document. B, section six, B, non-compensation class size changes. Staff development days, teacher prep time, and C reopeners contingency and or restor- restoration language are also blank. That's page three of eight.
Correct. Uh so the county referenced uh for the for the for analysis of these two areas. We we included the tentative agreement signed by both the district and uh the U T R bargaining chairs uh to answer both B and C. Uh but it should be known uh while there were no uh no substantive or materially uh big enough class size changes that we would put a number in and be on the face of it. Um C, we do have language in our offer that includes the current year, going back to July first of twenty twenty two. The rest that covers all of this year as well as language for all of next year. But we do have reopeners for salary benefits and one uh item by each party for twenty four, twenty five, which is within the successor agreement period. Uh that that's what would go and see normally. But the the county wa- allowed us just to submit the TA articles in in lieu of trying to type that into this box.
Okay, thank you. And final question is, I think you already said this. I just want to make sure that this is understood. The period of agreement is seven, one, twenty, twenty-two to six, thirty, twenty, twenty-four. However, your contract or your successor agreement runs through twenty, sixty, twenty, twenty-five. Might you please confirm that and explain?
So the so the the contract as as being requested for ratification by the board tonight in in E four uh is for the period you mentioned, which was July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. So a three-school year period. However, the financial agreement that we've done all this financial analysis on is for a two-year period, which is July first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So within the period of the bargaining agreement with openers in year three, reopeners in year three.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Um trustee Phillips?
Is funding for this proposed raise from multiple sources or is it just from the cost of living adjustment?
Funding for the proposed increases uh used all of the available cola, a lot plus required us to make substantial operational cuts uh not only in the current year but in future years.
And those cuts are L cap cuts as well?
The cuts will absolutely impact services currently offered in the local control and accountability plan in the form of additional hours for staff and contracted wraparound services.
Has this been discussed with the D L cap?
Uh I I know part of it has been discussed, and I know we have kind of a crosswalk planned for the next D L cap meeting coming up and I believe about a week or two weeks where we're going to actually try to crosswalk uh from the current to where we see uh the future going with this as a result of what we have to charge into the L cap for sustainability uh for the portion of the salary increases that have to go into the L cap. We have also been collaborating with the county in the best and and well, in best practices and also to make sure that we're meeting the legal compliance requirements as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Um okay, everybody, uh can I have a motion to approve? C three. So, sorry, C seven. Uh thank you. Um C seven, which is the adjustments to the budget.
I'll go ahead and approve C seven, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three budget revision after second interim to satisfy County Office of Education Oversight requirements.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Is there a second?
Smith, full seconds.
Thank you. Um board, are there any comments? Um okay, we'll start with uh trustee Phillips. Someone will just make our way this way.
I have a brief comment and it's just on this.
I'm sorry, trustee Reckler.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Phillips, and then we'll go this. I keep changing it up on you guys, so that's probably why. Go ahead, trustee Phillips.
So I have uh several concerns uh with uh this process, and I understand why it's happening this way. But the concerns that I have are one, I have never seen this kind of item on a consent calendar. So that's one. Um the second uh concern that I have is the timing and not the timing in relation to uh the county or this um tentative agreement, but the timing in relation to the normal budget cycle. Um normally, something like this, uh a budget revision, a particularly large budget revision would happen at a set time. Um and it's a time that community and folks are able to prepare for and give their input on. Uh and that's not happening here. The other concern that I have is that in the presentation uh not only uh was this put on consent, uh not only is the timing not in line with the normal budget process, um it says, you know, the changes will be fully disclosed in two weeks um on March fifteenth. And I that just for me raises transparency concerns uh as well. Um and then the last big concern that I have with this, uh to be honest, is that there's a community process uh regarding our L cap. Um and I feel like what's happening in this process here tonight is that we are totally circumventing uh that process. Doesn't mean they get to decide uh or make the ultimate or final decision regarding the budget, but there is a statutory process uh that requires them to have space to give their input. And I feel like we have done an in run around that process this evening. Those are my concerns.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Uh trustee Reckler?
Thank you, and I apologize for that before. Um my question, my comments are also technical in nature, the same. First, is that a doc- a document like this um for such a large and uh agreement should be uh not in consent? And I am also hoping or asking that these boxes that are blank, if someone could put N A not applicable or C attached sheet or C like whatever you need to do so that I'm not asking you and I know that that wasn't missed, if that is allowable. And then the other thing is that there seems to be a cover sheet to the county which was attached, but it's blank and it looks like it's a check the box. You know, this is what we're sending to the county, but I don't need to see the blank. I want to see that it's checked and that, you know, the documents were submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Um so for my comments, I do want to apologize to the board. You both bring up really good points. Um in agenda setting, we discussed uh whether or not to put in consent. And part of the decision why uh I decided to put in consent was because staff was supposed to discuss it deeply in our one-on-one meetings, um which I believe it happened. Um so that was my intention because then we were going to get the second interim at the next meeting. So uh but I I hear you both. I think you both made really good points about transparency. So um if we could do it again, we probably we probably would, uh because it was a really good presentation that ties to the next item. So uh so thank you for that, and and I do apologize uh for it. Um it comes to the L cap. I do we I do agree. I think there's going to be a lot of changes that we really need to include the L cap. Um committee and parents and families and students. Uh and then, you know, but I also want to remind us all that we were avoiding a strike, right, which would have destroyed our programs and really our our services for years to come. Um and we would have lost a lot of educators if we had a strike. So uh and a lot of families. So, you know, I hope that that definitely gets portrayed to the L cap committee because if I was them, I would probably be upset, right, that we're making decisions without their input at this point. But we had a lot of urgency for why we made decisions in the last few weeks because there were timelines that wouldn't have allowed us. So um so we have to take that into context. Uh but I think I already made really good points. Okay, that's it for me. Um let's move to our vote. So the motion is to approve C seven. And we'll start with trustee Varon. And I'm sorry, it's not just to approve C seven, it's to a- approve um the adjustment to the budget as the motion that trustee Reckler made.
Aron, yes?
Thank you, trustee Santos.
Santos, yay.
Clerk Smithfolds?
Smithfolds, yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Christian, yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Abstain.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. So it passes with um one abstention. Thank you. Uh okay, uh now we are moving to item E three, which is tied. So Dr. McIntyre, I think I'm passing it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna, I'm pulling up the uh the supplemental supporting documentation that I'll uh all project, but if you'll allow me just a bit of latitude to explain uh what this item is. Uh so the the purpose of the resolution, uh it's an implementation of a fiscal solvency plan. The county has said great, you have this plan that requires you to spend part of your fund seventeen, which the board has said is really for an economic slowdown or a major shift in the economy that the board doesn't, can't respond to immediately because of law. And when I say because of laws, because if we don't, if we need to, for example, change the number of staff we have in the district, we have to do that by March fifteenth. But if say, let's say the economy tanks over the summer, well, that's going to impact the entire next school year, but we can't get rid of any of the staff that we have because the law said we had to do it the year before. And so that's why uh prudent school districts like West Contra Costa typically have a fund like this set aside, like Fund Seventeen, set aside specifically for that purpose for fiscal solvency during difficult economic times. And since the district um is is saying that they have to use about half, a little over half of that fund in order to meet the economic demands of the of the agreement being presented tonight in the and then following item. The county is saying, well, you should have a plan on how you're going, what adjustments you're going to make. So you don't actually need to do that. Uh because the board has a policy saying we're setting that money aside for for specific reasons. And so the county is just asking that we kind of check ourselves. And so uh that it was, we worked in unison with the county uh to create a resolution that attempts to uh to accomplish exactly that, basically demonstrate what changes we would make to ensure that we don't actually have to spend down Fund Seventeen to meet the needs or the demands of what's in the in the agreement. And so when we look at the resolution, there's a lot of legalistic language, but it essentially says uh you know, that that the first interim report of the district, uh the county had had sent us a lack of going concern letter on February seventh. Uh that the county superintendent reappointed a fiscal advisor for the district, uh which will be Geveda Cleveland again. Um and we welcome her partnership. Uh the going concern letter that we received on February seventh um basically uh required the board to approve detailed budget revision that includes adjustments sufficient to cover all future costs resulting from the approval of additional expenditure commitments, including salary settlements. And so that's what we did in the last item. This item is saying not only are we going to do that, but we're going to really um we're really going to look and at at the 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 entire multi-year period of the of the presentation. And so what we're doing is looking at that nineteen point eight million dollars in twenty-four, twenty-five that we currently have uh estimated that we would need Fund Seventeen. And I'll project the exhibit because there the the county is saying demonstrate to us how you would actually deal with that between now and twenty-four, twenty-five. And so when I project so we're we're sharing the exhibit. And then and this is one of those items because we're talking about the future and and not like the future tomorrow. We're talking the future two years from now. Uh two and a half years from now. And so we have to recognize there's a lot of what ifs that can come into play in this. And when I say that, like, for example, in prior years, we had massive attrition. Now, we hope when the board approves this new salary schedule that's part of this agreement, that our attrition will go way, way down and that what will attract all the teachers to fill all the positions we need. But if there is massive out-year attrition, then that would cut tremendously into what this plan would require us to do on a dollar-for-dollar basis. And so I just want to recognize that what we've presented here is a plan that that effectively creates an uh seven and a half percent cut across the unrestricted side of the budget to cover the nineteen point eight million dollars that we currently plan to fund in twenty-four, twenty-five for uh to meet the the cash requirements in our multi-year plan under the uh the under the agenda item E four. And so you can see where we basically just applied the seven and a half percent across each unit, each of the bargaining units, and then across, for example, books and supplies. Uh our our other services and operating costs, so what we'd call the five thousand, that includes everything from utilities to consulting contracts. Um even even our capital outlay, we we generally don't touch capital out day outlay or indirect costs, so those are left off. And so you see basically just a seven and a half percent cut across each of the units comes up to the amount we're looking at. But what's real important is all the caveats you see down in the notes because these acknowledge operational reality. So for example, if the current estimated reductions are based on all known factors, including cost of living adj- adjustments as provided by the California Department of Finance and the governor's twenty-three, twenty-four January budget proposal. So if those assumptions change, our our need for for cash will change as well, both for the good or bad. Uh for the number two, some F T S and the projection cuts are unfilled or unfilled by are are currently filled by substitute staff. Well, that will make the adjustment easier in the the year for the the number of staff uh that you see for each bargaining unit. Number three, the proposed cut would be reduced on a dollar-for-dollar basis for retirements beyond the current budgeted amount. We assume a certain number of retirees in each unit each year. But if if the and that when you we use a fairly conservative number in that regard. So if if the natural number comes in higher for the next two years, then this will push down that number. Um number four is the seven and a half percent that we talked about. Number five is uh every every bit of ongoing operational savings that we yield will cut the amount that we have to to deal with in twenty-four, twenty-five. And number six is changes in state or federal revenues could positively or negatively impact the need and the amount for cuts in twenty-four, twenty-five in future years. So we just want to recognize that there's a lot is going to happen between now and when we actually operationalize this. Uh and we will be taking steps every And we will be taking steps every day. Operationally to try to right-size our budget, so we don't have to do this, because the goal is never to bring a reduction in force back. But under the current plan, until we identify those things or revenue goes up higher than we expect. Then we have to have a plan in place and that's, that, this is us meeting that county requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McIntyre. Before we move to public comment, if there's any. It is nine fifty, so I'm going to make a motion to extend our meeting until we're done with all of our action items. Is there a second?
Smith Folds, seconds.
Thank you. Okay, without objection. We'll approve the motion. Okay, so approved. Thank you so much, everyone. Okay, do we have any public comment on this?
There's no public comment.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're moving to questions, board. Is there anybody that has questions? Trustee Reckler?
Okay, thank you. So. Part of this is to clarify to the public, but part of it is that I could not really hear you. So forgive me if I'm making you repeat, but I'm also trying to pull out the, the big chunks for the public. So in twenty-three, twenty-four, you're looking for ten million in reductions. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, plus a borrow from Fund Seventeen.
In twenty-four, twenty-five, if we can't find them, the, the cuts in the, for next year that we're looking for.
Okay, and then for twenty-four, twenty-five, you have nineteen point eight identified. Of which five hundred and eighty K. Will be in the. Can you verify the, the five hundred and eighty K that you're looking to cut? Is that from books and supplies?
That is correct. So the, the numbers, the, 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 the number of FTEs by bargaining unit on the left. Don't necessarily crosswalk to the, the sex coding we have from the center right.
Okay.
So what you see there is, for example, the one thousand to nineteen hundred, and, and I apologize for not changing these to be. Human language rather than a school finance language. So the one thousand and nineteen ninety-nine, those are certificated staff. So anybody with a teaching or administrative credential or, or. Our counselors and psychologists, the two thousands are the classified staff. Anybody without a teaching credential essentially, or an admin credential for education by the state of California. The three thousands are the benefits that are tied to those salaries in the one thousands, two thousands, then you got. The health and welfare change. Then the four thousands, that's the books and supplies, and the five thousands is the other operating expenses.
Okay, thank you for that. So for Teamsters. You're cutting thirty-two, but you don't seem to have a total number in here. Is that? Correct?
Do you mean a total dollar value?
Yeah.
So within the, the Teamsters are a classified unit. So within that two point six million, you have Teamsters. You have some SSA members that would also fall in there. The rest would fall in the, the certificated unit in the one thousands.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. Board, our parliamentarian reminded me that our bylaw state that to extend the meeting, we have to have a time limit. So I apologize, my motion was not appropriate. So I would like to make another motion to fix the problem that the meeting ends at eleven-thirty. Which I really hope we don't have to get to that point, but we have to finish all these items. So. I'll combine it and say, finish at eleven-thirty. Or earlier if possible, if action items are done. Only for action items.
Smith Folds, seconds.
Thank you. Okay. Without objection. We'll approve. Oh, we have an objection. Do you want to do another motion?
No, I'm okay. I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, without objection, we'll approve. So approved. Thank you so much, everybody. Okay, any more questions for Dr. McIntyre on this item? Clerk Smith Folds?
Dr. McIntyre, this resolution. And forgive me if it's not the right name, but this resolution is just for the county to say, okay, go ahead. This is not something that, the way you have it laid out here, this is not something that the board has to say yes to when the time comes. We can move those numbers around as much as we want, as long as we hit the grand total. Is that accurate?
That is completely accurate, Madam Clerk.
Okay, I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Okay, can I have a motion to approve? Sorry, resolution number two, 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 three, dash, five, six. Okay, I'll make the motion. That we approve for a solution number two, two, three, dash, five, six, implementation of a fiscal solvency plan.
Smith Folds, seconds.
Thank you. Okay, comments board, we'll start with trustee Phillips.
Thank you very much. I just want to begin by clarifying. Fund Seventeen, it was not created to be a rainy day fund. I was on the board when it was created. We were trying to basically make sure that we were meeting our pension obligations. It was, it was never meant to be a rainy day fund. That's, it's been used that way in the last few years. But that was not its purpose. It's a rainy day fund like social security is a rainy day fund. It's not really a rainy day fund. I want to remind folks, the last time that we did the raise, one of the justifications for the raise. And this doesn't mean a raise is a bad thing, but one of the justifications for the raise was that we were going to attract new teachers. And we were told that if we did the raise, we wouldn't have the same hiring difficulties. That was the hope. That didn't work. I'm only saying that not to dissuade anybody from voting however they want to vote. But I just want to clarify what Fund Seventeen was meant for. And that the idea around. You know, we will have more teachers because of the raises, that, that didn't really happen, materialize. The third thing that I want to bring up is. We didn't follow our last fiscal solvency plan. And to be totally honest, I have great concern that we will follow this one. We voted last time, so the county would give us the green light. And then, as soon as we got the green light, we voted however we wanted to vote. And frankly, I'm afraid that that will happen again. And so those are the concerns that I have with this resolution, and I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Or any other comments? Trustee Reckler?
Thank you. I do just want to make clear that reductions, you know, are most likely going to be required. We don't know because California, on a daily basis, the fund balance seems to be different in the state. With the taxes and the way that California funds their schools, but. The board has to be prepared to make reductions. And we're borrowing, you know, from Fund Nineteen, Fund Seventeen, which. You know, I just want everybody to be aware of, of what, what's, what's happening. And, and be cognizant of it, and reductions may be needed, and people need to, to rally and realize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Smith Folds?
Thank you. I just want to. Clear up a little bit of.
Sorry, Clerk Smith Folds. I want to make sure that the. Sorry, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that we have a little bit of history. We voted, the majority of the board voted not to riff teachers. And I think the majority of the board made the right decision, because in the end, we got money that came down. And then we had the money to do what we needed to do. I think that if we have to cut, it doesn't have to be teachers. We don't have to cut teachers. We can cut and we can make deep cuts in other places. That's the purview of the board. And then we can say, we can say what we want to cut first, second, third, fourth, and if we get down to teachers. Then we can tell our community with all assurances that we did our due diligence to keep the cuts away from the classroom as much as possible. Now, if we get raises and they don't attract teachers, we know that low pay gets rid of teachers. So we know that to be a fact. Data shows if you don't pay people, they go. So we have to make some real decisions here and we need to pay our teachers. It's just, it's not, it's a non-issue. If we don't have teachers in the classroom, it doesn't matter about the programs. It doesn't matter about anything else, because we don't have qualified teachers in the classroom. I urge the board to keep its authority and realize that we have the ability to work with our district and work with our unions and work with our community and say, listen. These are what we need to cut. We're working together to figure out how to cut it. President Gonzalez, well, you created a committee. That's looking at the four thousands and the five thousands to try to reach that agreement of where we cut first, the deep cuts. Before we get to our teachers and the students, because that is what we all think, the majority of the board. Three of us at least have stated that that's a non-starter. We do not want to start with the closest to the kids, which are the teachers. I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Okay, for my comments before we move to the vote. So, so I agree. I mean, if we do the work right, that the committee is supposed to look at. With Clerk Smith Folds and Dr. McIntyre and Dr. Hurst and our unions. Will be less people we have to cut, right? And at the same time. We have a deficit in two years, right? So that's just the reality. Now, through that work, my hope is that we'll find enough savings there. Where it doesn't touch any people, any person, right? Who does work closest to the students. And now, I, I do want to caution us all, it's not going to be easy work. Right? Every dollar that's cut in that area is potentially a program. Or a resource that is used at our schools or our central office, right? So it is going to be a difficult work, but a necessary work. Because I do agree that the cuts have to be as far away from the classroom as possible, right? And research shows the best thing we can give our students is teacher and support staff, right? So that is my priority, of course. Now, if through that work, we don't get to the levels that we wish to cut. That's a different story, right? It's not through transparency in the public. And then at that point, honestly, we're going to have to make the difficult choices of cutting people, right? Because I think one of the priorities of this board is to have. A positive certification and keep our power within our budget, right, which is our community power. So. Even though it seems scary, what we're approving tonight, my hope is that those numbers diminish. Right? Through the work that the committee does on finding the areas. I, I don't want to say fat, because honestly, every dollar that we're spending is dollar that is going to something appropriate. I don't believe that we're sitting in money. Right? I don't believe that, Dr. McIntyre, you have a chest of gold in your office, right? I believe every dollar is being spent for something appropriate. So it's going to be difficult, but it's the right way of doing it. So, okay, now I'm just babbling. So why don't we move to the motion? Which is my motion to approve this resolution. We will start with our student trustees. Trustee Varon?
Trustee Varon, yes?
Trustee Santos?
Santos, yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trustee Christian? I'm sorry, trustee Christian, we couldn't hear you. Yes, okay. Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Abstain.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. So the, the vote passes with one abstention. I'm sorry, trustee Varon, were you an abstention or were you a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, with one abstention. Thank you so much.
Oh, it was, it was a yes.
It was a yes. Okay, okay, wonderful. Sorry, it wasn't your abstention. It was trustee Phillips' abstention. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move now to E four. Dr. McIntyre, Dr. Greenwood, and Mr. Tenesha Chak. Is this your item?
Yes, President.
Thank you.
Good evening. President Gonzalez Hoi, Dr. Hurst, and trustees. We are here to talk about the ratification from the board. Of the UTR contract that was successfully negotiated and ratified by the UTR membership. For the twenty-two, twenty-five school year. The UTR, United Teachers of Richmond, contract was in effect from twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two, which expired on June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. Both the district and UTR met over several months. To complete a successor contract, which will be in effect from July first, twenty-twenty-two. Through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, and expire on June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. The contract focuses on providing competitive compensation in face of the substantial inflation. Rates that we've, that we have seen in the Bay Area. The full text of changes are included in the attached documents. Including the AB twelve hundred and the letter from the county which has approved. The AB twelve hundred. Furthermore, all the language changes are attached, which are to this document. Some of the high levels. The areas that focuses on the tentative agreements include a substantial salary increase over the two-year period totaling fourteen point five percent. Along with continued support at eighty percent of the Kaiser rate for health and welfare for eligible employees. Clarifying language regarding instructional minutes for educators. Increasing the educator hourly rate to forty-two dollars per hour. Increasing the educator period subbing rate to fifty dollars for secondary and fifty-five for elementary. Removal of the limit on years of service that new employees can bring from other districts. Improvement on transfer rounds along with financial incentive for teachers who provide early notifications of leaving the district. Compensation for nurses at a hundred and twenty percent rate for covering absences and increased caseload. Stipends in the variety of areas, including combination classes, teacher leads. Department chair, water department chair, and community school leads. A first in the state of California contractual language regarding community schools. Expansion of paid parental leave. Safety commitments to educators and students. Reduction of counselor to student ratios at high schools. Additional district-wide site collaboration hours. Including additional flexible workday for educators. Along with cleaning up of several other articles. Again, these are just the highlights. The recommendation. Is that the tentative agreement for the successor contract was overwhelmingly approved by UTR members. And within the guidelines and parameters outlined by the Board of Education. Is recommended that the board ratify this agreement and implement the revised salary schedule, which is attached. The financial impact is also noted in the attachment at which Dr. McIntyre had gone over. This has been approved by the Contra Costa County Office of Education. Accordingly, we respectfully request that the board approve. The successor agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tenesha Chak. Now we're going to move to public comment. Staff, is there any public comment?
Yes, we have Ms. Jane Kinster. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening again, board. I would like to extend my gratitude to all of the board members that had helped. And us come to such an agreement. And that have just anything that you've pitched in, all of your hard work for budgets and listening to all the stuff. Much appreciated and thank you very much.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Once again, I'll just say thank you. But I'm someone who has about ten years until I can retire. And thinking about ratifying this, voting for this contract, I thought about my colleagues who were nearing retirement. And having conversations and discussions with them. And so they may not be the individuals who come on or who are even up this late. But this has allowed some of our members to decide to retire this year or to retire next year. These are individuals who were here during the, the year of the nine percent being taken back. These are individuals who were here. Back in two thousand nine of the year, the bad contract is what it's called, and we started paying for our health benefits and a contract was imposed. So I just want to say thank you and that these individuals. Maybe this has greatly improved their quality of life as they get ready to retire and do other things with their lives. You know, we are all members of, those of us who are all members of UTR, this contract represents everyone. Everybody might not get what they need, want, but just know that we have some colleagues that now they can retire. but just know that we have some colleagues that now they can retire a little bit more comfortably because of all the time they have put into educating our students.
Thank you so much, board. Questions on this item? Trustee Reckler.
Thank you. Once again, I'm just pulling out some highlights here. So just a very few short years ago, we signed another historic agreement with the teachers union and then almost immediately found ourselves in the $48 million hole. What are the specific steps that you're taking to prevent the past from repeating itself?
So as part of the, the effort to, to work internally and then eventually with the county, every time the, the district was in a position or received direction to, by the board, to, you know, kind of increase our offer and try to meet staff where they needed to be met while they're experiencing this massive inflation, staff would immediately basically break down the financials and say, what do we have to cut in order to pay for this? And, and for the most part, when you look across the multi-year projection, a tremendous amount of work and cuts were made along the way that got us most of the way of where we need to go. And, and so it's, it's not perfect. We're in a weaker, but we're, when, when this is approved, we will be in a financially weaker position should the economy soften. I, I want to be completely clear. But we've done the vast majority of the work that needs to be done to continue to try to match our expenses with our revenues, rather than waiting and hoping, not that that happened before, but we're, we're not in that position. We've done a lot of the work already. And we'll continue through the budget development period for, for the upcoming year to get as close as we can. We have no intention of leaving that $10 million hole in next year's projection.
Does the district have a structural deficit?
If, based on the assumed approval of this, we will have a $10 million structural deficit next year and a $19.8 million deficit the following year.
Would you please go over the district's, the county board of education's response letter briefly? Highlights.
The AB 1200 oversight letter we received today from the county when they reviewed our AB 1200 disclosure?
Yes.
Sure. Thank you. So in reviewing the financials as presented to the county by staff, the county, the Contra Costa County, County Office of Ed sent us a letter basically saying they had reviewed the district's negotiated salary settlement disclosure documents that provide the details for the tentative agreement with UTR. The AB 1200 disclosure documents provided by the, by the district indicate the district.
I'm sorry, can I, can I redirect you? You can just give the highlights.
Sure.
Have to read the whole thing.
Essentially, the county said that, that they, they recognize all the increases that we, that we proposed and that they believe with, with the budget adjustment item that we brought in C7 and with the resolution being approved in E3 before this item is being voted on, that we've taken all the steps we can to demonstrate good governance in the area of management.
I have one more, but I think I'm done with three, right? Okay.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler. Trustee Phillips?
Has the district been in financial trouble in years past?
Many, many times.
Every year that the district has been in trouble, is it true that the county has approved our budget that year?
I, I don't know the timing and sequence, but I would have to assume yes, otherwise you'd be in receivership.
So just to clarify, and I get this as question three. So just to clarify, the county has approved our budgets multiple times only to find out we were still in, we were in financial trouble after their approval.
I think that's a factual statement, yes, sir.
You said that's a factual statement?
Yes, sir. I, I mean, I believe it's contextual and there's a lot more going on with the, you know, the economic impacts and so forth, but I think on the face of it, it's factual, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Clerk Smith Folds.
Dr. Greenwood, do we look at seniority list every year? Or do we, how often do we look at and readjust the seniority list?
We run seniority lists every year.
Every year? Thank you for that. Dr. McIntyre, I don't have the answer to this except for, I guess, the historical knowledge when it was still called Richmond Unified. Do you know how many times we've been in receivership since we were not Richmond and became WCCUSD? Do you have a number?
The, the district has only been in receivership that, that time, but for an extended period of time.
When it was Richmond Unified and then that's the only time it's been in receivership.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm complete.
Thank you. I do have three questions. Dr. McIntyre, Dr. Greenwood, or Dr. Tenaster Chuck. I'm not sure which of the three this question is for, but either any of the, you are welcome to answer it. Before this agreement, so currently, were our teachers or educators underpaid in comparison to districts around us and below the state average?
We were at the low to bottom range compared to other districts in the area. In, in prior years, we tried to maintain to middle to upper to maintain with other districts.
Thank you. Dr. Hurst, this question is for you. If we had not come to an agreement with UTR, where would we be today?
I believe that we would have been at a strike. I think that's the reality. I think that's the message that we were getting from UTR president, from Mark Mitchell as well. And not only a strike with UTR members, but also potentially a walkout with classified as well. So I think that's what we would have been.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Dr. Greenwood, do you believe that with this deal, you will have a better chance at recruiting new educators and retaining our current educators in our district?
Yes, I believe it gives us a better leg to stand on with this new deal.
Thank you, Dr. Greenwood. Okay, that's my last question. So, board, we need a motion on this item. Motion would be to ratify the 2022-2025 successor agreement with United Teachers of Richmond.
I move that we ratify the 2022-2025 successor agreement with the United Teachers of Richmond.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Trustee Santos. Okay, let's move to comments. Board comments, Trustee Reckler, we'll start with you.
So I want to thank everybody and congratulate everybody on, on this deal. And I know it sounds like I'm against it and I'm being very critical, and it's not at all. It's just that I feel it's very important to point out that there may be real reductions coming. $10 million in one year and almost $19.5 in the second year. That is deep and that hurts. And we've been through the 4000s and the 5000s, which are the categories where people think there's a lot of fat and there isn't. There isn't. It's not there. I mean, you look at all of those line items and you're like, yep, 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 need that, need that, need that. And so it's only to point out that fiscal management and attention to these issues is of dire importance. We were here, many of us were here. The last time we fell off the fiscal cliff, it was extremely painful and it was scary. We didn't really know if we were going to be solvent. And so I just say this to raise it and know that programs are going to disappear and, you know, they're, it, it, and, and just to kind of set the stage on, on fiscal discipline. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler. Trustee Phillips?
Thank you. It's a, can, how much time is it?
Sorry, two minutes. If we could restart the clock. Sorry, I wasn't paying attention. Go ahead.
So I just want to start by saying, I don't blame the county for anything that has happened in this district in the past. The board has the ultimate responsibility for fiscal, in my opinion anyway, for fiscal management. I've just asked those questions to point out that we cannot necessarily just do something because the county said it's okay, because they've been wrong multiple times. And we know they've been wrong multiple times because they approve our budgets, they approve our contracts, they approve all of that every year, right? So that's why I pointed it out. I don't think we could just, oh, the county said it was okay if we do this, so it's going to work out. So that's why I said that. So the comments that I really want to make right now is, are these. So I'm glad to know that the entire COLA will go to the workers. I think we can afford that and I have advocated for that. However, this raise exceeds two times the COLA. I don't think we can afford that. I know the county thinks we can afford it, however, I respectfully disagree. And I sincerely hope that I am wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Trustee, sorry, Clerk Smith Folds? Oh, sorry, there we go.
I just want us to understand that we have the ultimate responsibility, which means that we can make decisions and those decisions can reflect the values that we say we have. If we value qualified teachers in the classroom, then we need to make the decisions around what that looks like. I don't think that we can lead from fear. I think we have to lead from on-the-ground reality. And the reality is that we have to have teachers in the classroom. We have to have qualified teachers in the classroom. Kids cannot learn without the basics, and the basics is having a qualified teacher in every classroom for the entire year. And we have to do whatever we need to do to make that happen. That's first and foremost. If not, I don't know why we're here. Yes, we have to be solvent with our money, but we also have to use the money we have the best way that we can, and that's keeping teachers and staff at our school sites and having our school sites running, running correctly and running at a standard that means that every kid has a teacher in front of them. That means that every kid has a yard supervisor and a custodian and a food service worker and all of the people that help keep, and a principal, all the things that help keep a school running. If not, I just don't understand what it's all for. We have to stay focused on our values, and our values is to make sure that we are providing a quality education for our students. Start there. And then everything else will, we work to make it happen. I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Okay, I do have some comments. Thank you so much. So I actually agree with what everybody has said. I do think that we have to be physically responsible. I think that there are a few variables that existed in 2019 that don't exist today. Poor management, poor leadership, poor bad numbers, right? Ultimately, because I was directly involved with the cuts and I had to be honestly the only one up here who had to meet with 120 teachers individually to tell them they were getting fired, I saw how poor management led to the numbers that we got back then, right? Poor preparation really was tied to class size, not to the races at that time. Because poor staffing at that time too, right? We were overstaffing our numbers in schools. We were unprepared. So we were also stretching with contracts, right? We were offering multimillion-dollar contracts for programs. Now, probably really good programs that shouldn't have happened at that time, right? So those variables don't exist now. And I think that we have some budget bulldogs on this board, right? That I think are going to keep us honest to that. And I think that what I'm hearing from everybody is that we are going to prioritize the budget, right? And sorry, let me go a little deeper on why those variables are not there, right? Staff establishing a staffing matrix that they're actually following. We have a good CBO, great CBO, a good superintendent, right? All that are looking at our budget as a priority, right? And a board that has gone through $48 million of cuts in the past and know what that does to people. In my five seconds, we have to just continue to center of the why we're doing this and why we're stretching the dollars so much to retain our teachers. Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's move to the motion. The motion is to approve the tentative agreement with United Teachers of Richmond. So we're going to start with Trustee Baron.
Baron, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Santos.
Santos, yes.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian.
Christian, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Abstain.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. So all yeses, one abstention. Thank you. Okay, thank you, staff, for, for that. We're now moving to E5. I'm not going to read it. Mr. Freeze, pass to you.
Yes, so, thank you. Tonight, we're asking the board to approve Resolution 2223-52, declaring the district's intent to grant an easement to the city San Pablo at the Lake Elementary School for access to and maintain the city's storm drain line. For a little bit of background on that, the, the city streets in San Pablo drain currently across our site with the new construction of the Lake Elementary School, we will be diverting their storm drain system or drains onto our property into an easement that exists, which is a detention basin for the city. We will be bringing this item back if you approve it tonight on the 15th for a public hearing and then approval of the easement.
I'm sorry, Mr. Freeze, to clarify, did you just say you want to bring it back on the 15th?
So tonight, we're, we're, this is the intent, so we have to do a public notice. So we'll do a public notice upon approval tonight. And then we'll bring this back on the 15th to a public hearing and then a vote to approve the resolution.
Got it. So the action tonight is just to open the...
So the, the action tonight is to allow us to post a notice to the public that the district intends to grant an easement to the city San Pablo on the lake property.
Thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, it sounded like a discussion item, so I apologize. Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. Okay, board questions? Anybody have any questions? Okay, then can I have a motion, please?
I will move Resolution 2223-52, you know, authorizing posting of notice to declare district's intent to grant an easement to the city of San Pablo at Lake Elementary School for access to and maintenance of the, of the city's stormwater drain line, returning to the board for future action.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler. Is there a second? Second. Thank you. Board, any comments on this item?
I do have a comment, President Gonzalez Hoi.
Go ahead, Clerk Smith Folds.
Mr. Freeze, it may, it may sound like a question because it may be a question. Who maintains the drain line? That's a comment, but it's, it's a question. It's a question. I'm sorry, President Gonzalez Hoi, it's a question.
So, so that's a good question. The purpose of the easement is to give access to the city to maintain the storm drain line once it's installed.
They do it. Okay, I'm complete.
Thank you. Okay, everybody, we're going to move to the vote. I'm not going to repeat the rest of the motion, but I think we all heard it. Trustee Baron, we'll start with you.
Baron, yes.
Thank you, Trustee Santos.
Santos, yes.
Thank you, Clerk, Clerk Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Thank you, Trustee Christian.
Christian, yes.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Freeze. Okay, board, we're moving to our last item, which is E7. I'm going to pass it to Dr. Hurst.
Final order.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I skip an item?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, thank you. Never mind, we're not on our last item. We're moving to E6. Mr. Freeze, back to you.
Thank you. So tonight, we're asking the board to approve the final change order for the construction project at Pinole Valley High. This is an item that's over 10% This is an item that's over ten percent is why we bring it as an action. I'm to the board. We're asking to approve changers thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one. The total value of the change orders is eighty wrote this down, I'm sorry. Eighty thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars, which will bring our total project to ten point nine percent on change orders. And this will close this project.
Thank you, Mr. Freeze. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you. Board, do we have any questions?
I have a question.
Clerk Smith Folds, go ahead.
Mr. Freeze, you said that this was, this will close out Pinole Valley. Is that correct?
The correction would be this would be the final change order to our contractor. It'll, then we'll bring back the notice of completion to the board and then it'll close out that portion of the contract. There are no other current contracts at this point on Pinole Valley High.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Freeze. Okay, I'm complete.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Are there any other questions? Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Oh, Mr. Freeze, I'll move it. I'll move Pinole Valley High School Fields Field House and Bleachers Change Order Approval.
A second.
Thank you, Clerk Smith Folds. Thank you, Trusty Baron. Any comments? Trusty Phillips?
Thank you very much.
Sorry, let me, sorry, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Let me just bring up the timer.
Okay.
Just to be consistent, I apologize. Thank you. Sorry about that.
So I want to start by saying I do not begrudge the high school in wanting more seating in their stadium, okay? I don't have anything against the high school. But I do feel that it has been a never-ending project. And I'm just, I'm, I'm saying this in jest, but I did think that it was funny just now. You know, Trusty Smith Folds says, you know, she asked for clarification because it said that, you know, this will be it. And then the answer that came back was different than the first answer. It was like, well, this is the last thing on this contract, you know? So, you know, I just, I think that we have other schools that are not, have not gotten what they should get. And I think that we keep going back on this school. We had a teacher call in today talking about Kennedy, right? The steed, I mean, we can go on and on and on and on. So I just want to be very clear. It's not that I philosophically have a problem with this stadium having more seats. The problem that I'm having philosophically is that I don't think the way we're distributing the funds are equitable. And so that's why I'm abstaining, but I don't dislike Pinole. I was the president of the Pinole Rotary Club. My office was in Pinole. I'm still in the Pinole Rotary Club, but I do think that there is a level of inequity when it comes to this school. And that's why I'm abstaining. It's not because I have a problem with Pinole or the school or anybody there.
Thank you. Anybody else's comments? Okay, let's move to a vote. Sorry, Trusty Baron?
Baron, yes.
Thank you, Trusty Santos?
Santos abstained.
Thank you, Trusty Smith, Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
Trusty Christian?
Abstaining.
Thank you, Trusty Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trusty Phillips?
Abstaining.
And I'm a yes. It passes with three abstentions. Thank you.
I'm sorry, President Gonzalez-Hoy, three yeses, two abstentions.
Yeah, sorry. No, I'm sorry. I thought it was three yeses, three abstentions, no?
Three yeses and, well, yes, three abstentions because one student trustee, President Christian and President, or and Mr. Folds.
Four yeses, three abstentions.
Yes.
Thank you. Four yeses, three abstentions, sorry. And it passes. Yes, thank you. Okay, now we're moving to our last item, which is the CSBA Delegate, Delegate Assembly Election. I'm going to pass it to Dr. Hurst to introduce it and then I will be doing the tallying of the voting.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did this item similarly last year. The California School Board Association has issued its ballot for candidates for the California Delegation Assembly. Subregion seven A, Contra Costa County, to serve a two-year term beginning April first, twenty twenty-two, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The ballot provides for the board to vote for up to three candidates. Just a reminder, last year, similarly, we actually had a question asked by, at that time, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. And he asked a question, is there anyone that knows anyone on the ballot? Trusty Reckler, at that time, shared that she knew Ms. Ramos. And from there, trustee, the clerk Gonzalez-Hoy voted for three. Then we had trustee Reckler voted for three. And then we had trustee Phillips voted for two that he felt comfortable with. Trusty Smith Folds, you voted for one. Trusty Christian, you voted for three and the student trustees voted for one. Student trustees have the information. We've talked to them about that. So I can pose the question. And we actually did a roll call vote. And then President Gonzalez-Hoy will be taking the tally. So I'd like to pose a question. Is there anyone that knows any of the delegates here? Trusty Smith Folds?
The second delegate, I know her. So I would be voting for her only. Dr. Tamila Hawley.
Does anyone else know any delegate? So that would be a no. So only Dr. Tamila or Tamila Hawley is known. So that, Mr. President, I could just go and start from trustee Phillips and ask for either up to three delegates for you to vote for, sir.
That's a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm addressing the question to the president.
Yes.
But the question really is not for the president. But, Mr. President, the one individual who knows anyone here, who do they recommend that we vote for?
You like the Spock thing that I'm doing or trying to do right now?
Through, through the chair with Clerk Smith Folds, like to respond to Trusty Phillips?
I recommend that we vote for the doctor. And I don't want to mispronounce her name because I'm a Jamila, so it may be Tamila, but I do, she's in Bowapa, I believe. That's how I know her. So that's who I recommend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I vote for Dr. Hawley.
Trusty Reckler?
Sure.
So that would be Dr. Hawley as well. Trusty Christian? Dr. Hawley as well. Trusty Baron? Same, Dr. Hawley and trustee Santos.
Dr. Hawley.
And President. Sorry.
Yes, Dr. Hawley. And I said Hawley because it looked like a K, sorry. Yeah, Dr. Hawley.
Thank you, ma'am. And then President Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you. I'm also a yes on her. I know what else.
Thanks, sir. So I'll turn it over to you for the vote.
Thank you. So no surprise, unanimous for Dr. Tamila Hawley. So thank you, everybody, for that. Okay, so that was our last item. Our next Board of Education meeting is March fifteenth here at Lavanya de Jean. Thank you so much to the board staff and everybody who watched. Have a good night. I adjourn us at ten thirty-eight.